Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. A lot of energy in the room right now. Good morning and welcome to Council Chambers and to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, June 27, 2003. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and clearly many of you are joining us today. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. It is now 10:20 a.m., and we do have eight members present, two shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of presentations and special introductions to be made. Wanted to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Gruel. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm so pleased that I could be here today to make this presentation. I'd like to ask the Forch family to please come up. Many of you who live in the East Valley, and I know it's part of your district, Alex as well, Jason, and now Ruth Galanter, but also Tony Cardnesses, that the Forch family owned and operated Roscoe Hardware for close to 85 years. Roscoe Hardware was San Fernando Valley's oldest, established, and largest supplier of general and builders' hardware tools, power tools, painting supplies, and other related projects. Whereas the descendants of Louis and Mary Forch, son Jack, and grandson Gary Glenn, maintain the family tradition of running the store and being active in the community. They really have had historic roots, have been a real community participant, and contributed to Sun Valley's rich tradition. They're one of the first families to reside in what today is Sun Valley, and whose name is synonymous with its history. And although Roscoe Hardware just ended their time and closed their doors, they have made an indelible difference in the city of Los Angeles, particularly in the East Valley. And as someone who grew up in a family business, I know how hard it is sometimes to keep it all together, to get along in a family business, and particularly to maintain that and to preserve jobs in the city. So I just wanted to take this opportunity with my colleague, Councilmember Padilla, and Councilmember Galanter, to acknowledge the Forch family, their commitment to the city, and wish them well as they go on to new endeavors. But they've been a staple of Sun Valley and one that we can be very proud of in Los Angeles. Thank you very much. They're shy, didn't decide to say anything, but they've been great, really, business leaders in our city. Thank you so much. And very briefly, Mr. President, I have one more presentation for L.A. Bridges. They're coming in the back. We have all the kids, all the kids in L.A.'s Bridges Program. Can you raise your hand, and all of you that are present here for the L.A. Bridges? I know some, you can stand up, stand up, so everyone can see you here. If you're familiar with the L.A. Bridges Program, on the 2003 L.A. Bridges graduation, we're standing here today to talk about the success of combatant in an effort to prevent and deter at-risk youth from gang activity and crime. This program enriches the lives of those youth most affected by gangs by offering alternative activities. The program also provides much-needed social services to the youth. We celebrate the program's achievements today, as we recognize those youth who have successfully completed the L.A. Bridges Program. For their dedication and perseverance, one can overcome diversity. And I know my staff members give me a list here of the students are from Autobahn Middle School, Bancroft Middle School, Bethune Middle School, Bret Hart, Burbank, Carver, El Sorino, Forché, Forché, excuse me, Fulton, Gompers, Hollenbeck, Horace Mann, John Adams, L.A. Academy, LaConte, Meday, Mount Vernon, Nightingale, Pacoima, and Stevenson. So all of you in the council have representatives who are here today from those schools. This program was started in 1997, and we recently had in my committee, and I know with Councilmember Garcetti, a review of this program and its successful achievements. And today, we're celebrating those students who have made a difference in their lives and their communities. They've become leaders, achieved academic success, and improved relationships with their families. At this time, I'd like to congratulate and recognize Alfonso Silva of John Adams Middle School for being his class valedictorian. Are you here, Alfonso? Somewhere back here? Congratulations. I'd also like to thank the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice Planning, L.A. Unified School District, LAPD, and all the CBOs and faith-based institutions that have collaborated to make this effort possible. I'd like to, again, if we could acknowledge all of the L.A. Bridges Program participants are here, and the schools that are represented, and thank them for their commitment. We look forward to you being future leaders in the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gruel. We really appreciate this time before you and acknowledgement of this program in light of the very busy agenda. So we want to thank you for your support. These kids are doing a great job staying out of gangs and becoming very productive citizens. And the parents have been very helpful in that regard as well. Thanks very much for the acknowledgement.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. And speaking of children in the schools and education in L.A.'s best, let me recognize next Mr. Labange for a special presentation.
Mr. President, as we await this presentation, could I ask that one of your deputies comes to, Mr. President? Could I ask that one of your deputies comes and joins me at this presentation, please? Would you assign one of them?
Let me look around the room. If any of my staff is here wearing a green suit, would you please approach the podium?
There's Mark Durking, who is the combination half of three beautiful children, three beautiful girls, who live in the North Hollywood, Studio City, Universal City area of Los Angeles, also a great deputy for Alex Padilla, President. We've got a great bridge right here, passing here, of all these young people from L.A. Bridges. Did you get to the tower at City Hall? Oh, you've got to go before you leave. Go to the top. You know the way? Take them to the top. This is a large group, but we're going to get started in just a moment there. Congratulations. What school? Nightingale. All right. Autobahn Middle School. A good job. What school? Autobahn. Good. What school? Autobahn. We've got Autobahn. And you're Nightingale? Nightingale. Good job. Good group. Good. All right, we've got everybody coming through here right now, so that room is very large. Going to take a great wide angle, 28-millimeter lens to capture that big group there, is Councilmember Gruel. But members here today is Caprice Young, and please welcome Caprice Young, President of the Los Angeles Board of Education. And there's an old saying, and it's not an old saying, but it's a good saying, is you get around smart people if you want to be successful. And years ago, I got around Caprice Young, because, as always, we all want to be successful, right, Mr. City Attorney? And so Caprice had that energy. I had the fortune of working with her under the Reardon administration as a special assistant to the mayor. Caprice was one of the top advisors, especially on technology, right when technology was a very new word in our vocabulary. She showed great promise and skill with Mayor Reardon's administration, being one of the very few who could work at all sides of the street in the success of the programs that the mayor was initiating. But she always had a passion for people, and especially children. And she chose to run for the Board of Education for the city of Los Angeles, and was successful as a member of the Board of Education for four years, making a difference in the quality of life for children of all of Los Angeles. She grew up in this city. She has a great story about how she went to Birmingham High School, and you're going to explain that, because I don't like to tell people those stories. But she also later completed her education at Yale. She's one of the brightest minds in Los Angeles. She's been honored by many different organizations and groups because of her commitment to young people. And I felt it was very important here on what is her last three days of service to Los Angeles, the Board of Education, that we bring the President of the council over and recognize her, and also her husband, because it's a team effort. Anyone who's in public service knows that team is extremely important to be able to be successful. But Caprice, this commendation salutes all your good works and deeds that you've done for all the years, and the continued deeds that you're doing. But the best deed that she does is she works with Holly Grove. Holly Grove is an orphanage of almost over 100 years in Hollywood that Cornelius Cole, who Cole Avenue is named after, and developed that part of Hollywood, developed this orphanage for Los Angeles children. And she's made a great impact on that over the years, and helped Holly Grove and the students there, our special needs students. But that is the real passion. And Mr. President, I talked for about two minutes there or so as we started here, so I'm going to stop talking, but ask you to join in everyone, and unanimously salute Caprice Young, member of the Board of Education, President of the Board of Education, Los Angeles Honor Service. Please salute Caprice Young, please.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And before we hear from Madam President, we will hear from Mr. Weiss, Mr. Garcetti, and Mr. Zine. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Caprice and Mark. It is so wonderful. Tom, thank you very much for bringing the great Caprice Young in here. It has been such a joy and such a privilege to work with you these past few years. You are truly, and I mean this, because I've met a lot of public officials in the last two years, you stand out as an inspiration to anyone in public office when it comes to doing it for the right reasons and doing it hard, leaving nothing on the table. Every single kid in school, in the L.A. USD, has had his or her life improved because of your amazing, boundless energy and commitment to them. Most of them, if not all of them, may never know your name or the names of any other school board member, but their lives have been enriched because of you. And it's made me so proud to work with you, to have you as my friend, and we're going to continue to work together in the future, and I wish you all the best. Congratulations, Caprice.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Tom Labange, for doing this. I've had the good joy of honoring our school board president as well in these chambers, and we could probably do it week after week. When I think of your leadership, Caprice, it's really courage that stands out. It's courage to do the right thing. It's courage to keep your eye focused on who this is all about, which is about children. And you have done as much in four years as I think any of us would want to do in all of our lives as public servants. And you have turned that battleship of a school district, that aircraft carrier, which takes so long to turn, actually around. I think you have, with many other people, but you through your leadership have single-handedly done that. You've been able to see that already, and when we know that our elementary school scores are going up as they are, that should be something that should make you smile every time you think about the school district, about whatever your next step is in life, and know that you have many, many friends who really want to see you do incredibly well in the next step and want to work with you, and want to make sure that you're part of our team as well. So congratulations both to you and Mark for your amazing, amazing work on behalf of all the children of Los Angeles, and we wish you nothing but the best of luck in your next endeavor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, Caprice, it went by quick, but you did a lot in that quick period of time in your dedication, raising the family, working to improve the quality of education, public safety at the schools, which has improved, putting a new chief of police in at the school district, which has helped enhance education, the traffic program that was implemented under your leadership, and all the other wonderful programs that you're responsible for. You have taken that bureaucracy and moved it, and it's the glacier that you try to move, and it's very frustrating to try and move it, and you've been successful in moving it and making it responsive. Your accomplishments are noted, the students appreciate, the scores show that you have accomplished what you want to accomplish, turning the system around and making it responsive. My congratulations to you. When you asked for an endorsement, I was there for you, and I'll still be there for you. God bless you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Caprice, I want to go back in your first life and what you helped us in LAPD when you came on board in the Reardon administration and helped us with our ITA function, and really got us to focus on developing, for the first time in the history of LAPD, a CIO that brought forth a tremendous energy with all of the systems within LAPD, for the first time, to have a functional operation that impacted the department, but also drew on the experiences of the entire city. Then you went on to use that same energy with the school board, in which I don't believe people will realize it until later, just what a positive impact on kids and those scores, and as those kids become high schoolers and on to college, they will appreciate the substance-based curriculum that you insisted on. And it seemed so an issue as far as this was so basic, that we should teach our kids how to read, write, and count as a basic element of getting them out of school. And I think parents throughout this city and this county will be appreciative of returning the school district back to its fundamental purpose of educating children. Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
Ms. Young, how are you? I know how you feel, don't I, sir? The fact of the matter is that I think just about everyone there who served in the school board committed to provide the best education that money can buy for our community and for our children. The problem is that you always had a budget shortfall, didn't have enough money to go around and develop and implement the programs that's required in order to save our youth so they would have an opportunity to have a bright future. Unfortunately, that's been ongoing, but you did your best. We all know that. And it's a loss for, not only the Board of Education, but by losing your leadership, it's a loss for the entire city, and the school district, and the children whom we care about and love. I say, however, as I say all the good things, one thing that I thought we could have worked out, and that's the Ambassador Hotel site. When I first supported your election, I thought I had a friend over there, and I still have a friend. But the fact of the matter is that Ambassador site is still there, still vacant, but we did one thing. Early on, about 15 years ago, we decided not to demolish the building, because then you have an open space, just a lot there. But hopefully sometime in the near future, they'll have some mixed-use school, if that's what they want. But certainly to maintain that corridor and have some commercial development would be an ideal mix, I think. But I wish you would be there to make all that happen, but it kind of moved you out a little bit into the valley. But you had a lot of friends here, and that's why we kept wanting to keep you here and support you for reelection. And you would have been reelected if you stayed in this part of town. The people just didn't know you, and in my view, they didn't do the right thing, but who am I to say? It's their choice. But my choice would have been you then, and I, and for the future, had I had an opportunity to choose. Nice to have known you and worked with you, and I'll always remember you. Thank you. Good luck.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, Caprice, I am happy to stand here today and pay tribute to you. It certainly will be a loss for the school district, but it will particularly be a loss for the kids, because no matter what, no matter what issue came before you on the school board, you always thought about it in terms of the students and the children in the Unified School District. And I want to say that historically, with you as the president of the school board, I think we have had an unparalleled positive relationship between the city of Los Angeles and L.A. Unified School District. And typically, we have not partnered, we have not communicated, really, we've left each other alone, except for maybe occasionally throwing rocks at each other. But you saw the value of forming a partnership with the city, and I really want to thank you for that, because I think the greatest thing we can all realize is that they're all of our constituents. The children in Los Angeles are as much our constituents as their parents are, and you've really made that clear. And I also want to thank you for the courage you showed in really campaigning hard for the school bond measure. That's not always popular, to add more tax to people, but you saw the need and the number of schools that we must build in the next few years to accommodate the students in our school district. And you fought valiantly, you were a leader on that, you were way out front, and I was happy to join with you in that campaign, and we passed it successfully. So years from now, generations from now, will be, the impact of your leadership will be felt in the school district of Los Angeles, and we thank you for your true public service.
Thank you, colleagues. Before we let you speak, I just wanted to add a few words. I want to thank you also for your years of friendship, not just since your time on the school board. We met when you were in Reardon's office, and we have that choral connection as well. But I appreciated our informal and quiet presidential summits, you as president of the school board, and I as president of the council, as we've talked about, Los Angeles, not just the school district, not just the city, but the region and the next generation is also important for us. So it's, I think, a shame that we're losing a quality, quality public servant today, but I know you're not going too far away, and you're always going to be engaged in Los Angeles' political discourse and setting the vision for the future. I know you're just a phone call away, just wanted to say I appreciate it, and I encourage you, and we're going to give you an opportunity to speak from this podium, to not be shy about sharing your perspective on, you know, what the tasks and challenges really are for the school district and what needs to happen, not for anybody's political sake, but for the sake of the children and the opportunity that they deserve at success in life academically. And as a side note, thank you, because I know I can work, Mark Durking, even harder after July 1st.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, Caprice Young.
I just, I didn't let them do anything like this on the school board, because I'm not very sentimental, and I get embarrassed easily, oddly enough. I know you don't believe that, but it's true. But I guess I wanted to say one thing. The reason why, when Tom called and asked if it would be okay if we did this, I said yes, because I wanted to be able to come to say thank you to the school, to the school and city partnership that we've created, I think is really unprecedented and profound and important, and I think it's something that is going to be a lasting improvement in the lives of our kids and our communities. As I look around the horseshoe, I see with every one of you, major partnerships that you've developed with Eric Garcetti around King Middle School. We're now enforcing zoning laws and stopping loitering and having art programs and murals around that school because of the partnership with his office. With the great Councilman Tom Labange, one of the first things that he did when he got elected was to get a stop sign, a traffic light, put in next to Lancashire Elementary School, so our kids can be safe crossing the street. And also, he increased the amount of lighting around the school site so that our neighborhood would be safe and the school wouldn't be vandalized. In Councilman Zine's office, we're working with the LAPD to make sure that our schools are safe. In Councilman Weiss's office, we've got traffic programs now around all of the schools in Councilman Weiss's office that are making our kids safer as well. With Alex Padilla and several of the other of you, we've worked hard to find school sites. In Councilman Holden's office, School District, we're now building nine new schools. Janice Hahn, chairing the committee that worked with us, but also with the neighborhood councils, we now have formed really tight partnerships around building school sites and making our existing schools better. Every single one of you has gone above and beyond to be friends to the schools and to be real partners, and I'm so thankful for your partnership. More than ever, I'm hopeful about public education in Los Angeles now, and I'm hopeful about public education because our kids are really doing well, and our teachers are working so very, very hard, and it's because of your support. And finally, Council President, I would just like to thank you for occasionally loaning me your planning deputy. He has been extraordinarily helpful and supportive in all of this.
Planning deputy and babysitter, extraordinary.
And I just, I thank you for loaning me my husband, Mark Durking, on occasion, who's been a real tremendous supporter in getting to do all of this. Finally, the last thing I've definitely learned as an elected official is that you don't have to be an elected official to be a leader, and that every one of us has a responsibility as community members to be leaders in our own way, as many of you, like Chief Parks knows, before he was a council member, was leading the LAPD, and many of you were leading in other ways before your council members. And after your council members, you'll be leaders again, and I intend to continue to lead in my own quiet way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and a very special thank you to Caprice Young. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Brinson Galanter, Garcetti, Gruel, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Myszkowski, Pacheco, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 13 members present in the quorum. Madam President.
All right. Let us quickly run through the agenda, call items special that we will need to discuss later, and then we'll continue and return to the presentation, special presentation.
First order of business, Madam President, is approval of the minutes.
Minutes, Mr. Zine approves, moves, Ms. Perry seconds. Minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those are also approved.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item number one, applicant consents to continue us to August 13th.
Item number one will be continued to August 13th.
Also, a request by Councilmember Hahn to continue item number two for two weeks, and that would be to July 11th.
Without objection, item two will be continued.
And also, a request to continue item number six to July 9th.
I believe we're going to call that special, because I believe item six is going to be a separate action proposed, so let's call that special.
Next items on the agenda, Madam President, items for which public hearings have been held, items three through 17. Item number six, I believe, was just called special. There are committee reports that have been submitted on seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11, and a motion is required on those.
All right. Members, items three through 17 are before us. Yes, Ms. Gruel.
Yes, Madam President. If I could have item number three continued for one month, please.
Item three, without objection, will be continued for one month. Members, items four through 17. Any requests for calling these items special? If not, then items four through 17 are before us, with a motion to approve the recommendation on item 11. On item 11, and...
Item seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11 all have required motions. Reports have been submitted and distributed to the council.
All right, so the motions as, the reports as submitted will be moved, and we can now open the roll on items four through 17.
With the exception of item six called special.
With the, item six has been called special. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved.
Next items, Madam President, are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 18 through 44.
Items 18 through 44 are before us, and we do have cards submitted on item 45 and 46, so we'll call those special. Other than that, 18 through...
44.
44, all right, so we're not at 45 yet. 18 through 44. Members, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on items 18 through 44? Seeing no cards and no one come forward, those are now before the council. Members, item 18 through 44. Seeing no items called special. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are all approved.
Next item, Madam President, on the continuation agenda, item number forty-five is an item for which public hearing has been held, and there is a community impact statement that is on the agenda, and there's an additional one, and a copy has been distributed to the council members.
All right, we will call item forty-five special.
Next items are forty-six and forty-seven, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held.
I'd seen, we do have cards on forty-six, so we will call that special. Item forty-seven. Members, anyone wishing to call item forty-seven special? If not, item forty-seven is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is approved.
And that concludes the agenda for, except for the items called special.
All right, why don't we recess our agenda and go into the, run through the special council meeting agenda? Call the roll.
Bernson, Galanter, Garcetti, Grohl, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Miskowski, Pacheco, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, thirteen members present in the quorum, Madam President.
All right, let's go through this agenda.
On the special agenda, there are, let's see, eleven items. The first items are items for which public hearings have been held, items one through three.
Members, item one through three on the special agenda are before us. Any items to be called special? Items one through three on the special council meeting?
And a report is to be submitted on item three, and I believe that has been distributed to the council members.
All right, the item three issue has been a recommendation from Personnel Committee. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved.
Items four through eleven on the special meeting agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item six, seven, eight, nine, excuse me, six through nine, the hearing date needs to be changed to July 26th rather than August, that's on the agenda.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on those items? This is the items four through eleven on the special agenda. No cards were submitted. Mr. Hayes, what item would you like to speak on? Okay, item four on the special agenda, we will call special. So items five through eleven. Oh, and Mr. Five, we have a card from Mr. Hayes on item five, so we'll call that special as well. So items six through eleven. On the special agenda. All right. No members wishing to call those items special. Those items are now before us, six through eleven. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. We will hold items four and five, which are called special, from the special agenda, and add them to the regular agenda, and adjourn the special agenda meeting, and go back into the regular agenda. And at this time, we have a very special presentation, and I would like to recognize our council president, Alex Padilla. Oh, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Pacheco did ask if he could make just a brief introduction of some guests. Mr. Pacheco?
Just a brief introduction, colleagues, Madam President. I have some representatives from, Elena Arias, and a couple other representatives, please, from El Comité de Educación Compensatorio de Roosevelt. These are parent leaders from Roosevelt High School here, who are joining us and participating in today's final city council meeting for this session. Thank you. Gracias por llegar con nosotros.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Now, once again, let me recognize councilmember Alex Padilla.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This, colleagues, is, as you know, the last, but certainly not the least, of our tributes to some of our colleagues who are retiring at the end of this month. If I can ask councilmember Ruth Galanter to please join me at the podium. There's that smile that we know exists, and we love to see more often than not.
Graduation Day.
Graduation Day. Colleagues, this is the last council meeting for our colleague, councilmember Ruth Galanter, and just wanted to say a few words before we proceed with the tributes as we have for the last week. Many people know councilmember Galanter as having been an environmental champion, not just within the city council, but throughout the city of Los Angeles, and the state, for that matter, really setting a tone prior to her service in elected office, certainly as a council member, one that has earned her awards and recognitions from national and international organizations. She's been at this podium before, when it's been in recognition of her accomplishments on policies, on recycling, on grabbing councilmembers by the ear and saying, "What are you doing with that soda can?" She's also, as many of you know, a planner, both by training and especially at heart, and has applied those skills, that education, to one of the most critical components of our jobs as members of the city council, both in her West Side District and more recently in the San Fernando Valley. I was personally impressed more recently when, through her districting, she began to represent portions of the San Fernando Valley. And I said, "Ruth, I know the area, was raised there, served, represented parts of what's your new district, want to go out there and show you around, let you know what it really looks like." And she said, "Alex, I appreciate the help, but give me my space, give me my room, give me my time. I'm going to get out there myself, drive in my car, and learn the landscape, learn the terrain from my planner's perspective on my own, and when I get a feel, I'll come back to you, and we'll work together." And I think that was just very impressive, one small example of how hands-on, very thoughtful, and appropriate approach to serving that new area. And one of the things that I think she was caught a little bit by surprise with is the open arms she got out into San Fernando Valley. And I know I'm only talking about the last several months of a long career here in public service, but again, indicative of the surprise she had coming out to the valley, when people should have been upset that they were given a council member they might not have voted for, but it was councilmember Ruth Galanter, and the spirit of saying, "Ruth, you're our council member now, we want to work with you." And Ruth certainly reciprocated, recognizing it was only going to be a brief amount of time, but not time to waste. Brief amount of time, now let's be smart and strategic about how we make the biggest impact with the one year that we're going to be together. And Ruth wasn't born and raised in the San Fernando Valley, but was also appalled and put other council members, organizations, newspapers in check on why hasn't, haven't things been done around here. So she came and kicked butt for a year, and the community's going to be bitter off for it. But personally, I'm most appreciative for a couple of things. First of all, for our conversations about the Commerce Committee. Before I served on it, and since I've served on it, our quiet conversations behind the scenes in the horseshoe or in committee about airports and the bigger thinking that needs to take place, airport expansion, airport modernization, whatever you want to call it, and how it's not a small task, it's a big task, when there requires a very creative and bold solution, not looking at one facility, but keeping four facilities and even more in mind as we approach that challenge for the future of the city and the region. And above all, Ruth, and I don't think anybody can disagree with this, I personally appreciate your honesty and your directness. Ruth Galanter is not known for mincing words, she's not known for not telling you what she really feels, and she's not known for playing games. And I think that's something that is lost sometimes in the world of politics. I've appreciated it, and I've appreciated all the support and suggestions you've given me, especially in the last two years, as we've tried to embrace the leadership opportunities we've had in the city council, and your years of service here, and your insight and wisdom on leadership in general have been very, very helpful to me. But before I go on too long, and before my colleagues get an opportunity to speak, we have a little surprise for you. And I was asked to make this announcement specifically, because maybe unlike some of the previous videos we've seen this last week, Ruth, you're not aware that a video has been prepared. Ruth had nothing to do with it. But it was your staff, your supporters, and the Galanter family that were inspired to put a video presentation together, and I'd like to ask ITA to now roll the tape.
They warned me, but they wouldn't let me see it.
For generations, business at City Hall had been conducted behind closed doors. Power had been hoarded by professional politicians. The hopes and wishes of our neighborhoods had fallen upon deaf ears. And then, in a stunning upset for the political status quo, voters in the diverse and eclectic Sixth District swept into office a community activist with a different way of doing things. It was a new day at Los Angeles City Hall. What a wild ride it has been, bucking the establishment and tackling controversy, solving decades-old problems, and making government work for her constituents, talking common sense, and speaking truth to power. After sixteen years on the council, Ruth leaves elective office with a remarkable legacy. She solved longstanding problems, built affordable housing, protected the environment, promoted smart growth, encouraged economic development, increased city services, and developed solutions to long-term problems. Thanks to Ruth, our communities and our city are forever changed. Not one for the spotlight, Ruth never dreamed of running for office. She dreamed instead of getting things done. Born in the Bronx, Ruth learned the value of activism from her mother, Vera, a schoolteacher with a strong sense of right and wrong, and a powerful commitment to her community. Ruth attended the University of Michigan, where she was active in the famed SDS, Students for Democratic Society. She went to graduate school at Yale, earning a master's degree in urban planning and fighting a New Haven redevelopment project that threatened to destroy a working-class neighborhood. Once she got to California in 1971, she quickly made her mark as a savvy activist with a passion for health care, affordable housing, and protecting the environment. She wrote the Health Law Newsletter, worked for the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and fought for the restoration of the Santa Monica Pier. With her direct, some said blunt, plain-spoken manner, she badgered developers and government agencies up and down the California coast into doing the right thing, like putting low-cost housing in the coastal zone. When Governor Jerry Brown appointed Ruth to the Coastal Commission, it stunned her opponents and thrilled those of us who believe our beaches belong to more than just a privileged few. Then, in 1987, when activists in the Venice area needed a champion to challenge an entrenched incumbent who had turned a deaf ear to the Sixth District, they looked to Ruth.
We had a series of meetings on our back patio. The discussion then centered on, who is the candidate? Who would be the viable candidate? And lots of names were tossed around, but it kept coming back to Ruth. She certainly knew the issues and her good work on the Coastal Commission, plus the strong history and ties she had to the community. And it became more and more not an issue of who is the viable candidate, but how do we talk Ruth into running? I have a recollection of having a group of people sitting on our back patio once again, and plying Ruth with wine. And after lots and lots of discussion, we finally convinced her that she was our hope, and she, she had to do this. And they all assured me with great confidence that there was no way in the world I could win, because I'd be outspent and so on. And I finally wound up asking the state official, I said, "Well, you know, if I don't run, she's going to get back in, it's going to be an easy race." And he said, "Yeah, I know, and that's kind of too bad." And I said, "Well, what would you do in my position?" And he looked a little startled, and finally said, "Well, I wouldn't run." And I said, "Thank you for your time," and left. And of course, that's the way I respond to things. You tell me I can't do something, and it, it kind of gets my adrenaline flowing. And so I went back to the group and said, "All right, what do we do next?"
It was a long-shot campaign, short on funds, but long on commitment. What it lacked in political sophistication, it more than made up for in popular support. And then, tragedy. Ruth's incredible bravery and determination inspired us all. Her insurgent campaign continued, and voters in Venice, Westchester, and Crenshaw swept her into office.
Galanter won 58% of the vote, to Russell's 42%.
My victory represents a victory of a vision of the future of Los Angeles, as a place where people are interested in cleaning up the environment, keeping the neighborhoods pleasant and safe places to live, directing growth and development where it's most needed, and protecting our quality of life. I see myself as a spokesperson for that movement.
During her council career, Ruth was the city's long-range thinker. She was more concerned with tackling complex issues like airport expansion or utility deregulation than she was with making flashy speeches.
Well, Ruth looks at the big picture, the things that really count. She isn't just for day-to-day headlines, although she does get headlines because she's such a fighter for the causes she believes in. The great thing about Ruth is that she's a person for the ages, not just for the moment. And I think that her constituents really appreciate that fact and understand that she cares about this city and she cares about the people she represents.
For years, Ruth waged a lonely battle against expansion of LAX. She took on the mayor, she took on the airlines, she took on the federal government. At first, no one at City Hall took her seriously.
When Mr. Reardon became the mayor, he announced a massive expansion plan for the airport, and of course, the communities all around the airport were very, very nervous. I'm very proud of the fact that by the end of Mayor Reardon's term, everybody in the region had learned to spell regional.
Everybody who comes to LAX, she has helped them, because keeping this airport from expanding, she's helped people stay away from traffic gridlock, from increased environmental pollution, that all this huge expansion of the airport would have brought.
In the midst of the ongoing airport battle, Ruth tackled other major issues and demonstrated that she was a political leader ahead of her time. Long before the state faced rolling blackouts, Ruth focused on the coming peril of energy deregulation. She formed an ad hoc committee to educate her colleagues and convince them to protect DWP and keep utility rates low. Ruth was never one to shy from controversy. She confronted it head-on. Again and again, she took on developers and NIMBYs to turn the Playa Vista project into smart growth. In the end, she forced a much smaller project that restored wetlands, built needed affordable housing, and provided jobs to at-risk youth.
Certainly, my philosophy had been what I regard as a progressive view. I figured out that because some of it was wetlands, the wetlands ought to be saved. That's the environmental part of it. The part that wasn't wetlands, it seemed to me, was an opportunity to build badly-needed housing.
Affordable housing was one of her passions, but she much preferred building it to talking about it. Any developer looking to build in her district knew they would need to include affordable housing.
She has ensured that the interest of those who are renters, those who are homeless, those who are increasingly unable to afford the excruciatingly high rents in this city, especially on the West Side. She has been their voice, especially when it comes to competing with those who have great power and influence in this city.
Ruth often stood alone on the council, fighting the odds for things we now take for granted: fluoride in our drinking water, expanded recycling programs, and promoting water conservation through the use of low-flow toilets.
The thing I'm the proudest of, actually, is the toilet law, which means that we use a whole lot less water every time we use the toilet than we used to. And the result is that we're able to run the city... And the result is that we're able to run the city today with, I think, it's about 30% more population, but the same amount of water.
Ruth was a tireless champion of the necessary but thankless tasks: fighting to establish high-speed rail service, restoring Mono Lake, or battling to clean up Santa Monica Bay.
The election of Ruth Galanter to the City Council was sort of the green shot heard around the world. Everything changed after she was elected. It was an extraordinary event where it became a big deal for the city to go green, ultimately going from what was a city that had been derided, particularly on sewage, garbage, and other issues, and air issues, to one that became, in the course of a few short years, a leader in the nation. And I credit Ruth with all of that.
Over the years, Ruth grew from an insurgent newcomer into a senior member of the council. Her leadership steered the council through contentious debate over one of its most historic votes.
If we say yes, go ahead. We are agreeing to having a consent decree subject to all of these things that we've done.
As well as through one of its darkest hours.
The really bad news is that Mr. Faro is no longer with us.
Ruth's style of leadership was uncommon, rarely seen at City Hall.
Ruth should be remembered as a citizen politician, somebody who really came from the outside, was successful in the inside, but brought with her the sensitivity to listen to the concerns of the average citizen. And when she listened, she just didn't listen. She created programs and projects that were in direct response to what they wanted. She had a lot of fights and skirmishes in the City Council arena, but I think she clearly heightened the council's regard for environmental issues. She heightened the council's regard for neighborhood issues. And in many cases, she stood alone on things that she really believed in. Again, she was a citizen politician.
Outside of City Hall, in the communities she served, Ruth will be remembered for her remarkable record of achievement. Her neighborhoods are full of monuments to her hard work: restoration of environmentally sensitive habitats, new recreational opportunities, new community centers, a new police training center, a half dozen new libraries.
Right off the bat, we realized how fortunate we were to have someone who not only cared about her constituency, but cared about the community as a whole, and wanted to make the community a better place for the constituents to live. You know, it was very refreshing to have a councilperson that what she focused on was the end result and how to get to it. She did not feel that she had to go around smooching with everybody to get to where she was. That took too much time. She just got in, she did it. And that's what we enjoyed about Ruth, getting things done.
This didn't happen by itself. The quarterback, the leader, was Councilwoman Ruth Galanter.
Ruth was known as the woman who got things done. She put the community first, cut red tape, and pushed public agencies to revive and complete long-stalled community projects. And like at the Venice Beach renovation, she knew how to do it with style. Venice Beach was just one of the many major projects people thought were dead until Ruth came along. Ruth's must-do attitude convinced Lucky Supermarket to open the first new grocery store in the inner city in generations. It was Ruth who worked with the state and the county to build the new sound wall along La Brea. And after decades of neglect, it was Ruth who fixed Venice Boulevard. And it was Ruth who refused to let small-minded bureaucrats tear down the Venice Pier.
But one of the biggest things, I think, for Venice was the reopening of our pier. And that was a really monumental accomplishment. Because to be closed for 13 years, everybody had written it off, but she wouldn't give up on that pier.
Ruth's focus on her district remained constant, even when the district lines did not. When she inherited West LA in one redistricting, she expedited Greenway Projects and built a playground for disabled children. When her district moved to the San Fernando Valley, she organized cleanups of illegal dumping sites, promoted youth art programs, and battled environmental racism.
This is an amazing woman. She fights for constituents. She doesn't just give them lip service. She sees a problem and she goes in and tries to solve it. This is unique in Los Angeles city government. Most sit around and simply tell constituents they're working on the problem, but nothing happens. With Ruth, things do happen. And she was a breath of fresh air in the San Fernando Valley. We're going to miss her. We wish she could stay around for a long time.
Her constituents might remember her best for the community participation she encouraged. Fifteen years before neighborhood councils became a reality, Ruth formed community advisory councils throughout her district to give people a say in planning and development issues.
But it's not fair to hold all these people in this community hostage to that. I ask you to adopt this today and have whatever policy discussions on broader policy issues you want to have afterwards.
I always felt protected when somebody was trying to carve another piece out of us, specifically Westchester Playa del Rey. Ruth was always there to analyze the situation and protect us.
Long before council meetings in our neighborhoods were routine, Ruth sponsored in her district the first evening meeting of the City Council, attracting 500 residents.
You know how that expression, actions speak louder than words?
Yeah.
It was her actions.
Yeah.
She really didn't focus on what people thought. She was a doer. And she came into the community and basically just did the job.
For Ruth, empowerment wasn't just a campaign buzzword. It was the reality of how you got things done.
And I really do believe this: government works best when we do things with you, not to you or for you.
There's more to Ruth than her tremendous public achievements. There is the more private Ruth, familiar to her friends and staff, a woman with a sense of diplomacy.
People may disagree with me. The Canal people had a huge fight with me my first year, and they kept saying, "Well, you have to do this because you're our representative." And I said, "Listen, guys, you can tell me you disagree with me, but you cannot tell me that you're surprised at my position here. That's why none of you voted for me."
An eye for the latest fashion and a taste for fine art. She is at ease with movers and shakers, skilled at dealing with issues of great significance, and comfortable with the trappings of power. Ruth has a way with words, an irreverent sense of humor, and a unique outlook.
In politics, it's not the norm to treasure substance over form. In fact, it's quite the other way, despite what many people say. Thus, solving problems counts for naught, and so does exercising thought. What counts is symbols, drums, and noise, and thus, whenever there's a choice, the news will fan and stir the storm while substance falls before the form. So now you know why government is such a mess, and money spent in foolish ways, and why it seems that sanity and hope are dreams.
Ruth's greatest legacy may be the way she inspired people and showed them that one person can make a difference. Her imprint will be felt for generations to come in the staff members she has nurtured.
I've had an incredible collection of people who are dedicated, enthusiastic. Mostly, they have to have a decent sense of humor, which is the only way to survive in this job. And they have been what sustained me through 16 years of this stuff. I mean, every politician knows, although few will admit, that you are nothing without a staff that is dedicated and capable. And I'm just as proud as can be of the people who've worked for me, and especially the people who stuck with me through some difficult times. I mean, they've been a wonderful staff. They're very funny.
Ruth inspired hundreds of residents in Crenshaw and on the west side to work with city government to improve their neighborhoods.
She taught me how to deal with what was going on around me, where was the smart place to look for the solution, how to deal with the people I was going to deal with so that I got the desired result. She would always encourage me and always showed up and just showed me that politicians are approachable and do do what they say they will do, some of them. So I always just sort of expect people to do that, and I'm always surprised when they don't.
Ruth also left an impact in the valley, where her actions inspired faith in government among a new constituency, initially hostile to a white politician from the west side.
But one thing I learned is that because you're a different color or different background doesn't mean you're going to put us apart, you know, away, or segregate us. They're willing to work with the people, and they're really there for the people. They will help.
She is certainly a woman with her own style.
You may not like what I have to tell you, but it's going to be the truth. And you can check it out, you can test it. And every time I have done that, and I have had to say to people, I know you're not going to like this answer, but there's no point in my hiding in front of you. Let me tell you the truth. People are really grateful. And apparently, it's very unusual.
After 16 years, four election campaigns, thousands of constituent calls, scores of community projects, and more controversies than you can count, Ruth will be long and very fondly remembered.
She's a tough chick. And I guess that's what I liked about her, too.
I will always think of Ruth Galanter as being someone for the people, someone who cares about the environment, and someone who got things done.
She wasn't caught up in the political arena. I really believe that Ruth was in it for the good of the community and the change that she thought she could do. And most politicians, they get elected and they get very caught up in the whole process, not so much the job itself. And I didn't find Ruth to be like that at all.
Semenado-san and myself will remember Ruth as a white lady that actually helped us. She helped the community. That's the most important thing, that she helped the kids, and they're happy, and we're happy, and we're a happy community.
I have to smile when I think about what it was like going into Ruth's office with my crew on whatever issue it was when I was at Public Works, where, you know, we'd always be a little nervous going in because, you know, she knew so much, and she read so much, and she cared so much, and she was so goddamn smart, that we were always afraid we were going to walk in and she was going to ask us some question that we couldn't answer. And she asked really hard questions. And it was always a little daunting, but we always came out really happy. Even if we didn't know the answer to your question, we're going to have to get back to her because we knew we had a councilperson who read the stuff and who really cared about it and whose aims were the same place as ours.
Ruth Galanter is an individual that has integrity, that is reasonable, as we say in public policy, is an adult, a mature individual, who knows how to be reasoned yet passionate in the positions she believes in, who knows how to compromise where it's warranted, who never loses sight of her principles. She has been an individual who has never lost sight of what a public servant is here for: to serve the city, to serve a community, to lead this place a little better off, if not a lot better off, than how an elected official has found it.
I trusted her. I miss that.
She was an outsider primarily, trying to function within a system that she didn't have a lot of regard for as a system, but she knew that it could make an impact on the outside world. So she was willing, in a way, to sacrifice her own life, her own self, to operate in an arena to try to make life better for people outside that arena.
I think I mentioned that I'm kind of an accidental politician, and I was told by one of my original supporters recently that she kind of shook her head and looked at me, and she said, "You know, you never really were much of a politician. It's both your strength and your weakness." I am who I am, and I'd like to be remembered as thoughtful and truthful and willing to take a risk in order to achieve a goal.
of the council and all the citywide officials. First is, as the video has shown, Ruth Galanter came into office on a very, very important lesson. Yes, it was about the platform she ran on, preserving the environment, listening to the community. But let it also be a lesson to all of us about being in office and being incumbents isn't an entitlement. The moment we begin to lose the pulse of the community, the moment we begin to become disconnected and prioritize secondary opportunities and responsibilities over our primary responsibilities as members of the council, and that is to respond to the needs of our districts and to serve our needs of the district, the moment that happens, a long will come of Ruth Galanter to take us out. And that is a valuable lesson for the history books in Los Angeles. And second, another thing that is synonymous with Ruth Galanter for the better, and it's something that she doesn't get the credit she deserves for, is the reality of the Playa Vista project versus what was initially proposed. Ruth came in as a staunch environmentalist, and she shared with me personally and privately many times of the friendships that she's lost in the course of the battles on making a responsible project happen out there. It's a political cause for something that was the right thing to do, the realistic thing to do as well. If any of you haven't had a chance to visit that project, I encourage you to, to seek examples and models of which you can apply in your own district. A couple that I'm seeking to apply to housing developments that are being proposed in my district. And Ruth, if nothing else, I don't think you're able to make it, but there is a library grand opening in my district tomorrow that is, in my own special and small way, a tribute to you. We're going to be cutting the ribbon on the Lakeview Terrace Library, which has superseded a gold standard for sustainable design and construction. It will be the most green building in the city of Los Angeles. It sets a standard for the future, and it's because of what you taught me and the example that you set. And with that, Ruth, on behalf of all of our colleagues, we have this resolution for you. Again, the least we can do to say thank you for your years of service and your years of friendship and your years of lighting a fire under us when we needed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. And Ruth, obviously, as you know, there are many, many people here who want to speak and say something to you and for you. Let me first recognize our city attorney, Rocky Dugadillo.
Absolutely. I wouldn't miss it. I will be very brief, but as you can see today, Ruth Galanter, over the years, has been tough, in-your-face, straight shooter, right at you. But let it be known today that this is a woman who also has incredible emotion and is not afraid to show it. And that's something that gives all of us that human quality, and she has certainly demonstrated that today. And I'm very proud of you, and I feel very much for all that you have done for the city of Los Angeles. I think Ruth Galanter is a perfect public servant, an incredible individual who has stood up for what she believes in day in and day out and never, never backed down. I am a...
And always right.
Except when I was on the other side. But I was just going to say, her only defect was that she went to Yale. But as a Harvard grad, I had to say that. Harbor, harbor, no. But certainly, I'm honored and proud to have been, even in a small part, in a small way, involved in your leadership. And I will take much, as we go forward, from that example. And I will learn much as we go forward. So thank you very much for your incredible service to this city and the residents of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky. Next, let me call on our city comptroller, Laura Chek.
You really made an effort to get here.
Yeah, but because this sister of mine, with whom I had the good fortune to serve for eight years, we used to whisper sometimes about trying to maintain civility... for eight years, we used to whisper sometimes about trying to maintain civility, and also roll our eyes sometimes when things went on too long. So to that end, I will not. But I do want to tell you that, not infrequently, when I am reaching down into trash cans and pulling out water bottles and soft drink cans, I am proud to say, as people look askance at me, Ruth Galanter taught me to do this. Thank you. My mother, the schoolteacher, says the greatest satisfaction is when somebody you taught remembers that you taught them. So thank you.
Thank you. Now let me begin with your colleagues. Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. As the controller said, Ruth, let me try to give a Ruth speech, which might be tough for me, but I'll try to be short, I'll try to be honest.
Remember what I told you. You quoted it the last time.
Try to not make this about me, but about you. Some of these stories I shared with you before, but it's been a real joy sitting next to you, and I know it's been during some of the toughest times you've been on the city council. But underneath, sometimes angry, sometimes upset, sometimes impatient person in the last two years here, has been somebody who is as wise as I now know she always was. And some of the lessons that you kind of threw to me as asides have really, really made an impact, and I hope that everybody can hear them, and they make an impact on them, because they certainly changed the way that I think we should all be council members. First of all, and I know I'm breaking this rule, you taught that the best speech is often that one unsaid, because when you have something important in front of you, sometimes you don't need to crow about it, you don't need to go on about it, you just need to get it done. A second thing, you once told me about environmentalism, is a lot of people, and they said it today, call you an environmentalist, but that you really see yourself not as an environmentalist, but just as a planner, that it's much bigger than just environmentalism, it's how do we make life good here? How do we tie together all that which urban planning should be about to sustain life in Los Angeles? You've taught me not to be a conspiracy theorist, not to think that the world is against you, although I think those words you said sometimes, sometimes you felt yourself the opposite way, especially over the last couple of years. But the most important thing you said is, "I've got a lot to teach, but nobody's asking me." And I hope that, as you leave here, that you will keep that avenue open to me, but to others, who do want to reach out, who do want to ask you, and who do want to have a career like this, because they too want to get things done. I think it's a testament to politics right now, that there's so much BS in politics, that you can live in politics without it. And that, more than anything else, is how I would characterize you, that you don't pander, you don't ever tell people what they want to hear, and in fact, you tell them more bluntly than anybody I've ever seen elected office what they don't want to hear, and then make them have to let that settle in and deal with it. You turned to me the other day, and I think maybe it's because of some of the scars of the last two years, though I know there's been not just scars, but some good things as well, and you said, "I wonder if I'd have enough votes around here to name anything after me." And I know we'll be talking about Tom Brady later, so there will be plenty of process in this, the neighborhood councils will be consulted, this will be sent to committee, but Cindy Mizakowski and I are introducing with seven other of your colleagues, because that's the max we can do under the Brown Act, a motion to name the Venice Pier after you, Ruth.
Anybody from the neighborhood council?
For your work as part of an entire community, but as the video says, somebody who simply would not give up, and a way of commemorating just one small thing that you did among many, that's our outgoing gift to you. Thank you for your friendship, your counsel, and all the lessons.
And thank you for the motion. I do have one more aphorism for you to keep in mind. Even paranoids have enemies.
Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Ruth, I first want to associate myself with what Rocky said about your coming from Yale. But in a serious note, I want to note that when our friend, who used to sit right here, Mark Ridley Thomas, left a few months ago, a number of us remarked that the conscience of the city council had left. And with you, with your departure, I think it means that the backbone of the city council will be leaving as well. You know, that photograph that I noted in the videotape was a photograph of you with a baseball bat. That's Ruth Galanter, not backing down, total integrity and total commitment. And indeed, you ran on a platform that you could not be bought, and you would not back down. And in one of your penultimate legislative moments here, you reminded people of why they sent you here 16 years ago, showing that, among all of us, you indeed are the backbone of the L.A. City Council. Congratulations on extraordinary career here, Ruth.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Let me recognize Councilmember Dennis Sein.
Meow. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, colleagues. Ruth, I first met you when I was a director with the PPL. We had many conversations and endorsements for your campaigns, your reelection campaigns, and I also remember going to Heal the Bay, and the events that were sponsored on the sand, the dinners that they had overlooking the ocean. And you were the person that motivated me to get involved in Heal the Bay. Always environmentalist, and we keep under our desk, Ruth, just because of you, we recycle all the paper, because you've always been an environmentalist, you've always been an environmentalist, and also the issues of purchasing. I remember many times you said, "When you go to dinner, go to dinner in the city of Los Angeles, we get the sales tax. When you go buy clothing, buy in the city of Los Angeles, we get the sales tax." You've always been an advocate for the people of the city of Los Angeles. I remember not too long ago, you came before a transportation committee on an issue regarding pedestrian safety for students at a school, and fighting to make that happen. And the bureaucracy continues to plow along at its rate that it always plows along, and the commitment that you have for the community of the San Fernando Valley, the commitment you have for the people of the West Side, the commitment for the people of Los Angeles for your 16 years is commended. I appreciate the friendships we've had over the years, and I wish you the best in the future. And every time I think of the Santa Monica Bay, Ruth Galanter, thank you very much for your years of service, Ruth.
Thank you, Dennis. That pedestrian thing isn't fixed yet, so I'm counting on you to keep their feet to the fire.
Councilmember Labonge.
Madam President, thank you very much. Ruth, congratulations. What a wonderful moment right now, you know? What a wonderful moment to think of all the things that you've done and impacted the lives of people, and had a direct impact, but in so many ways. And your work with the Department of Water and Power, and helping that agency, which I worked for for a time, look at it better light, if I could pun the word, in so many ways. And I'm also extremely proud, because you were the first councilmember I talked to as a staff member, about County Proposition A, to make sure that got on the ballot, which led to successful ballot initiatives for park bonds for this county, and trying to do things. So you've truly been a champion of so many things, so you could celebrate that, because there's a lot of people who are in office who don't accomplish near what was done. And that was an absolutely beautiful video that touched so many people in your staff, which was nice to see your staff recognized, because as we know, we can't do it all alone. But I wanted to ask permission from Madam President that I could be joined by the great general manager of the Water Division over, you know, there's two parts of water and power. There's the power side that drives the power, but there's the water side. And Ruth did tremendous things for water, not just the toilet issue, which, you know, Laura Chick was talking about trash cans and thinking about people. I don't want to tell you what I think about sometimes when I use a modern toilet, but you don't mind, because you made a difference to bring water. The same amount, there's no more, there's 30% water, right, Jerry? How much?
30% more people.
30% more people, same water since 1970. There's a champion right there in Ruth Galanter for water. But...
My very own toilet, I can tell.
Jerry, say something, and also on the greatness of Ruth and the Owens Valley, and all the work as we do this here.
Well, Councilmember, on behalf of the Department of Water and Power, we would greatly thank you for the leadership you provided for over a decade in both water and power issues. On water, setting the tone for the future, leading us into the conservation, enabling us to continue the economy of this city while making the water supplies last. On the power side, for keeping us out of things, particularly deregulation, and it's been a balance. Today, on behalf of the department, I want to present you with your very own smart lamp, green. It's a green power lamp. This lamp only runs on green power and will reject all electrons that come from dirty sources. As a remembrance here, we want you to have the green power lamp.
Thank you, Jerry, and Mr. Labonge.
Wait, I don't think they're done.
One more last item here.
Jerry, this is your chance to make a plug on, to make sure the water system doesn't go broke in two years.
This is the most important right here. I never got this, and I was up the street.
Because of your extensive role with us, we have made you an honorary member of DWP as a retired member of DWP. This badge entitles you to all of the privileges of a DWP retiree.
Even parking?
Even parking.
That's the key, parking.
Thank you, Jerry.
And we certainly do support you, appreciate your support on all the issues, including the revenue we need to meet the future.
And while Jerry is here, guys, before he gets away, you ought to ask him about that. Thank you, Jerry. Don't take that away.
Councilmember Pacheco.
Madam President, colleagues, Ruth, how are you? It's my turn. First of all, I want to tell you all that Ruth and I have really gotten to be good close friends over the last couple of years. And Ruth, many times, she and I would just talk about life. We wouldn't talk about politics. We would just talk about what's going on in the neighborhoods, what's going on in our own personal lives, what we're thinking about for the next part of our lives. But I wanted to share with Ruth something that she shared with me about my role as a father. And you remember when we talked about that with my daughter? And she, and I was telling her how my daughter's going through those teenage years, where they're less inclined to want to hang out and talk to their parents, or talk to their father, especially if you start asking like I do about boyfriends. They don't want to talk about it. So Ruth said I only had one responsibility above all my other duties to my daughter, and that is to tell her two things. One, that I loved her, and two, that I was proud of her. Because ultimately, every daughter wants to hear that from their parents and their father. And so Ruth, I have used your advice. Every time I see her, I tell her that.
Did it work?
And it works, because she does not spend a lot of time with me, because right now she's busy with cheerleading boys and school. And I'm not sure which order yet, okay? But I did want to share with you that I really appreciate your friendship. It's pretty clear from your video and everyone's testimony that you were definitely a unique person on the council. And I can tell you that I've learned a lot from you, watching you, watching everyone here who's served some time on the council, has really provided me with a lot of insight in how to get things done. And so I'm very proud of being your colleague and having served this time with you, and thank you for all the lessons.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Let me recognize Councilmember Perry. Is Councilmember Perry nearby? All right, let's jump to Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues. I'm probably the only one here who can say that I actually voted for you when you first got elected. In fact, I was a young housewife, raising my children at home in Westchester. And you came to my door. You don't remember me, but I remember you. You came to my door, and I was extremely impressed, number one, like all people are when candidates come to your door. It never fails to impress the homeowner, that you would actually take the time to walk door to door. And I was very impressed with you, and I thought what you were saying was right on. The problem was, of course, my dad was a staunch supporter of Pat Russell, and had already endorsed her. But this was the first parting of the ways between Jim and Janice and their father. It was our first major show of political independence, and we both supported you. And I put a sign on my front lawn, and I was one of those residents of Westchester that really believed that you truly would be a voice for the people. And clearly, from, again, the testimony, the video, you have been a great public servant. One of the things I have appreciated about you, like I said, it's not always welcome, but it's certainly appreciated, is that you tell the truth, and you're extremely blunt, and you really don't mince words. And I always found it, twice I found it interesting, I was kind of going to you for some encouragement, some support. You were a woman in politics, and I kind of wanted, you know, to have your support. And the first time was when I ran for Congress in the 36th District, and I made a point of coming up to you and saying, "I was running for Congress, and I'd really like your support." The first, you didn't miss a beat. Are you nuts? So I was like, "Okay, I'll talk to you later, Ruth."
I did support you.
You did, I know. But it was that first initial, I thought, "Oh, my gosh, maybe she's right, I am nuts." The second thing, of course, was when I ran for the elected charter reform commission, and you pretty much said that in a little harsher words, but also, "Why in the world would you want to do that?" So you, again, you always made me rethink things. You always made me think about another angle, another thought, and I just didn't plow through things. But one of the things I want to tell you honestly, and I haven't done everything right since I've been elected, but one of the things I really think I did right, and I'm really glad for, was, as you know, two years ago, I was offered the chair of the Commerce Committee. And I took that ball, and without hesitation, I passed it to you, because I knew in my heart that you were the right person to chair that committee, and it was so good for me as a newcomer, to sit there for two years on that committee and watch you, and listen to you, and learn from you. And I want you to know that just because I never asked for you to teach me, I watched you every single day, and I really learned from you, particularly on that very, very important, powerful committee in the city of Los Angeles. So I want to thank you for your leadership. I want to thank you for, even when you didn't notice it, even when you didn't think it was happening, all of us were learning from you in ways that you would probably never know. So congratulations, Ruth, on what I consider to be a great public service career, and I hope it's not over.
Thank you.
Councilmember Perry.
Ruth, I'm happy to see you smiling again. It's been a little while. Well, I was so glad that I was able to be here with you while you were still in office. And I remember the night that we had our public hearing on redistricting out in Westchester, and I was so moved by the comments of the enormous turnout that you had for the people here, and I was very touched by it. I know how heartfelt and emotional it was, and I could see the great love that your constituents had for you then and have for you now. And I guess, in some ways, you're just kind of going home. And I want to say thank you. You've been like a big sister to me, and yes, you always told me I was wrong, but you did it with a smile, even though your finger was up, and you even took me to lunch. And I enjoyed it nonetheless, and I feel that I learned so much from you, and I hope that you and I can continue to work together on projects in the future. And I can say with mixed emotion that I'm happy for you, because I know that you're happy, but I'm going to miss you.
Thank you. Of course, we can keep working together, just ask.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Burnson.
Well, Ruth, this is it, for both of us. But I just want to say what a pleasure it's been working with you through these years. Good portion of that time was a seatmate. I never really met you before you came to council, but I recall your election, and I recall the tragedy that you had, and I recall the courage that you had coming back here to council. I remember the first day when you could barely speak, but you were here. And she was here for you folks in that district, from that day on, fighting for you. And that voice did improve, and we managed to hear it. Sometimes we didn't want to hear what it said, but we heard it anyway, because that's the way Ruth is. But I will tell you, Ruth is not just an environmentalist, she's a conservationist, which goes a step beyond that. which is, goes a step beyond that. A conservationist is one that conserves using water, reusing things. It isn't just the bay, which she was so responsible for working for the Santa Monica Bay and the Venice Pier and the beach, and the beachfront at Venice and the many other accomplishments. But I can't think of anybody that knows more about our water system, about the electricity system, the things that we depend upon every day and nobody thinks about. And most of us on the council, all we know is when we turn the tap on, we expect water to be there. But Ruth knows all that and a lot more. And I think that this is not the end, Ruth. This is just the end in this chamber. I think that she has so much to offer to the people of not just Los Angeles, state, the country. Because of where she stands on issues, she's not afraid to speak up. And we haven't always agreed, although most of the time we did. But I will tell you that she fights for what she believes in and this city is going to miss her on this council and I'm going to miss you also, although we'll be seeing each other because we're both going to be out there. Good luck to you, Ruth. I know this is just the beginning of something new.
Thank you, Hal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burnson. Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I wanted to stand up with my colleagues and say to Ruth too, I've had the pleasure of knowing you for 16 years and have learned a lot. We worked together when I was in Mayor Bradley's office, when I was at HUD, when we were at DreamWorks, which was always, it was a challenge. And you were there, you, as everyone has said, have been a champion, you did what you felt was right, no matter what the consequence is, and stood up for what you believed in and have been an integral part of this city council and have made an indelible mark on the city as we've talked about and things that not everyone in the city may know what you've done. That video, I think however, really spelled out how you have made a difference in the quality of life of our residents throughout the city of Los Angeles, not just for your constituencies that you've represented. And that you have been such an outspoken critic and an outspoken supporter of things that are important to the city and wanted to add my congratulations into your career and know that we'll continue. I know to hear from you about things that you care about, that we can continue to have here in the city of Los Angeles and be that strong advocate. And it's just so heartwarming to see so many people here today. I know there's probably thousands of others who couldn't be here because of work or other commitments, but that have always expressed their admiration and how important it was that you represented them during that 16 years. So congratulations on a well-deserved honor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Next, Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ruth, we've had several different relationships from the police department and now colleagues. But one of the things I've always appreciated and I think that many of us in the police department were just in awe of your stamina and your character after the tragedy that occurred. And we also appreciated in working with you that you kept your word, you told us what you thought was important. And the bottom line was very important to you, whether it wasn't the philosophy, it was a matter of did we get it done? And I don't know of anyone that served more diverse communities from Baldwin Hills to Mar Vista, to the Canals, to Oakwood, to Westchester. And when I worked out there in '73, it was difficult to even get those groups of people in the same meeting. You almost had to have six or seven meetings just to be able to talk to the community.
Hasn't changed.
Hasn't changed. And also the boardwalk on the beach. And so these are all the communities-
That has changed.
That basically have sent a message that you've led them. And even though we've had some boundary changes, those communities are still intact. And so I think it's been very, very appreciative from my standpoint that we found that when we talked with you, you had a grasp of the issues, that you spoke your mind as to what the concerns were. And we could always go back and you'd have a complete memory of those discussions and you'd know if we met that goal. And that was always important because we could also depend on you when we came to you and asked for your support for something. And so I would just say thank you very much and also thank you for your counsel during my race for the city council. You took time, although I couldn't find that location for a while, but once we got there, we had a great meeting and sat down and just talked about what the challenges were in campaigning. So thank you very much and best luck in your next life.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Next, Councilwoman Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ruth, I did want to come down. As you know, and I'm not sure that all the others know this, you and I probably have the longest relationship of those who are presently on the council. We, I shared in a very strange way, your fateful day, because you had been this scrappy candidate against a very powerful incumbent and you had gotten into the runoff. You had had some consultation on the side with Marvin Browdy and that's where we had met when you were working with the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy as a consultant and putting forward great environmental plans even then. I think Temescal Canyon was one of the first ones you did for them. Marvin had decided, after you had forced Pat Russell into a runoff, to come out officially and endorse you, which was a very interesting thing to do for a then incumbent. The day that we were planning and arranging that was in May, 8:00 in the morning, I was at Marvin's house.
And I didn't quite get there.
Marcela Howell, your campaign manager and then your first chief of staff, Marshall Grossman, your campaign people, were there to decide how we were going to do this, come out publicly with a press conference. Only Ruth didn't come to the house. That evening is when the attack had occurred. Luckily at that point, even though Marvin was a council member and trying to get information about what might have happened, because Marcela, your then campaign manager, had gotten a strange call from a neighbor that Ruth had been taken away in an ambulance that night and she wasn't sure what had happened. So no one could try to, could find out what had happened. Marvin's wife, Dr. Marjorie Browdy, had UCLA access, started calling around all the hospitals, is it true that Ruth Galanter, the candidate for this district, has been brought in? What can you tell me? And the interesting thing then, I get chills-
They wouldn't tell you, would they?
They wouldn't tell us. I get chills now thinking about it. Members, there was such concern about some very, very powerful interests in that district who might have been interested in not seeing you elected, that when Ruth was brought into the hospital, the police department and others were smart enough to not check her in under her own name, to check her in on an anonymous name. So you can imagine trying to find out-
Do you know what the name was? Mary Russell.
Mary Russell. But then, from that very, very tragic point, Marvin did endorse, Marvin actually, and I accompanied him, became somewhat of a surrogate campaigner because you were clearly in a hospital bed, very, very seriously recovering. In fact, it wasn't even clear that you were going to be able to be here on July 1st in 1987 to be sworn in. But you made it, we saw the tape. And I think one of the most remarkable things, and I'm surprised it wasn't in the tape, maybe the video was shot before this occurred, but you came in that way, struggling, scrappy, and you recently shared with us your first, well, one of your first pieces of campaign literature, Ruth's Galanter, "She can't be bought, she can't be bossed." And that appeared again just a few weeks ago here. What a great culmination to start that way and end that way, showing that you had a commitment to a vote, you couldn't be bought, it was there, it was sincere. And that, I think too, is a great legacy among all the others that are there, that the video showed. Didn't mention, I think, that you also are responsible for even the fighting with Mayor Reardon, on the one hand, because of the airport. It was through you that Mayor Reardon appointed David Freeman, the head of the general manager of Water and Power, because you had found him, you had met him. And again, you knew that he was the right man for the job, gave him to the attention of the mayor. And that mayor said, Ruth is right again. And we had a man who then started to lead Water and Power in, more so, in the forefront of environmentalism, very much so in the reorganization and restructuring of that that made it, made and saved money so that today, we can look to them to help, help the city's budget. In any case, your legacy stands for itself. When I was talking with Eric about what might it be appropriate to look for a naming opportunity, many, many came to mind. But there's no question that the Venice Pier, which others wanted to see torn down, stands today and I think it's an appropriate tribute. And I hope that the neighborhood councils in your community and the other community organizations will come out and support us so that we can make this and bring you back maybe sometime later this summer for a special naming opportunity.
Thank you. I hope so too.
Thank you very much, Ms. Misakowski.
Of course, I do want to point out to you, I don't think there's anybody from the Venice Neighborhood Council here today because they're having elections tomorrow and everybody is out campaigning.
We hope this doesn't become an election issue.
But that's what I was checking when I looked around, when you mentioned this earlier.
There's one right there.
Oh, we have some here. Why aren't you out campaigning?
Venice, not Van Nuys. Okay, Councilmember Holden, you're the next.
Hi, Nate. I'm ready.
You know, you were my choice for that election in the 6th district and I never regretted it. We may not have been on the same side of the issues at all times, but I liked the way you demonstrated your independence. As you made it, said, as you said early on, you're not bought, not sold. And I'm not bought, not sold, but I'm not for rent either and neither are you. You staked out your position, you held to it for as long as you were here. And that's what sometimes is misunderstood. When you take those hard positions and you stick by them and when they benefit the people, you're not a rubber stamp, then sometimes you're not, you find yourself in disfavor. And I'm sure you've seen that happen more than once. But I wanted to say that also, not only were you a councilperson who got things done for your district with regards always for the environment, we all know that, you also demonstrated leadership when you replaced John Ferrara, when he passed away and became the president of the city council. Someone asked me, well, you're president pro temp. I said, no, we don't have president pro temp when there's no president. Next time they print the agenda, have them put you in as the president. And then I also suggested that we should make that into a motion and validate the fact that you were such. I just want you to know that I will join in the vote to name the Venice Beach the Ruth Galanter neighbor, what do you call it? Whatever it is, Ruth Galanter, you got my vote. And since I will not be in office at the time, even though the beach serves us all, I'd be delighted to sign the petition that to choose a circulate one. So I know how you felt about having to leave Westchester and all because you loved the community. You loved represent- No, you can go ahead. The airport and all. And in fact, whenever development was encroaching on the quality of life for the people in that area, you could only count on one person to speak out and say enough is enough and not anymore. I found myself with you there, except for one thing, Pla Vista. There was a 14 to 1 vote, but when the time came to give you what you want in terms of voting for the monies at that time, I went ahead and did so.
You did?
And when they had the celebration saying, look at this esquestration and the wetlands and the part that was saved, I think I was the only one to join with you in saying, let's cut the ribbon out here. And I think that whereas we developed that project, you also preserved a certain area so we'll be there forever for the children and children of children to visit, to know what it's been, what it was like for years before, prior there too. So I want to congratulate you for a job well done. I'm sorry that you had to go to the valley, but in doing so, you still represented two communities. You had an advantage. You represented the one that you are in now and you represented the one that you used to represent for 15 years. And I don't think anybody is that talented except you, Ruth. Congratulations.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. There's been a special request by our chief legislative analyst-
Cindy, before, I just, I forgot one thing during Nate's celebration and I just, if I can just take a second here. You know, both of us left out the most important thing that you did for me, which was, and I'd forgotten it until this very minute, when I first got here, I had no idea that you could get a badge that says council member and the district number on it. And it was Nate Holden who said, don't you have a badge? I'll get you one. And two days later, he handed me my badge, which I still have.
All right, I recognize Mr. Deaton, but before that, let me, Mr. Garcetti had one more-
One last thing, Ruth, that I forgot to include. No, go ahead, Ronnie, come on over. The best story that I didn't share, and I don't know if you remember saying it, but it's very Ruth, so I think it has to be shared here. You turned to me one day and you said, you know, you know what I realized yesterday? I realized it's not all you that I hate around here, though you're probably a little worse than some other councils. But it's these meetings that I hate because when I'm in these meetings, I'm not out there getting things done. I think that encapsulates, I think a lot of us for the last two years weren't sure how do we approach Ruth Galanter. We know that there was difficult times that you went through and that we were the reason for some of that, et cetera, et cetera. But that day, it kind of clicked, I think, for you and it clicked for me, that sometimes being down here, not like, not liking being down here, didn't really have anything to do with us. It had to do with the fact that you couldn't get more done.
Actually, it doesn't have anything to do with you guys. I was like that from the day I got here. That's where all the poems came from, these meetings go on and on and here we are going on and on. Okay, Ron, you're up.
All right, Ron.
And I haven't even had my turn yet.
And Ruth, there are at least 13 to 14 cards of your friends and constituents and neighbors. Ron.
But I want you standing for this.
I'm standing.
Had the pleasure to work with Ruth all these years. One little story is the recycling. I remember one day I went up, I don't know if it was a Coke can or a coffee cup, but I finished whatever I was drinking and I was looking around and John Ferrara looks at me and says, whatever you do, put that in the right thing, otherwise she's going to be up here and give me nothing but hell. Couple of, and this is a 6'4" All-American tackle. In any event, two things, the citizens of Los Angeles that I've been involved with, I think, oh, and Water and Power mentioned in kind of in general terms, but the, every time they flush their toilet or turn on their lights, the largest increase in the city's water supply in the last 25 years has come from low flush toilets. Ruth was the author, Ruth was the promoter. And there, and if you look up and down the state of California, a large increase in water supply is not easy to come by. And by self-generating that, it's not just that people are saving more water, but you have more water for all your purposes throughout this city. Secondly, and the department talked about her assistance in deregulations. Her assistance in deregulation was to be a stone wall for their lousy ideas, quite frankly, of how to implement deregulation. It was a very spirited discussion, but she stood solid to stop what were, would have been some disastrous things relative to how the electric utility in this city works. And it works a lot better, it works at a lot lower cost and a lot more effectively for the citizens of Los Angeles. So when they turn on their lights, they should thank Ruth for the efforts that she did in maintaining that. For the most part, in these 16 years, Ruth and I have got along incredibly well. She and I, I think, see more or less eye to eye on almost all issues. However, there has been one issue, the Mojave Power Plant. So, in commemoration to our biggest difference, I have had prepared, and I'll read the inscription. To Councilmember Ruth Galanter, this is the first and last recip- you are the first and last recipient of the Ronald F. Deaton Environmental Award. This is your 10% share of the Mojave. That's all there is.
Just as well.
Ruth, you, I don't know if you want to stand there or sit. I'm now going to begin to call the people who have come here to give you tribute.
I think I'll sit down.
First, you may want to stand for this one, we have the mayor of El Segundo, Mike Gordon.
This is my alter ego.
Madam President, members of the council, I'm joined today by my council colleague, Kelly McDowell. I'd like to give our thanks and appreciation to our councilwoman. We happen to represent the southern point of Ruth's district, the city of El Segundo. It was eight years ago that Ruth Galanter and I and a handful of elected officials stood on Mortuary Hill in El Segundo and said, there was a better way to deal with regional aviation demand than to double the size of LAX International Airport. I said that day to Ruth. I said, Ruth, we're taking on Mayor Reardon, we're taking on the airlines, we're taking on the unions, we're taking on all the major corporations. What do you like of our chances? And she goes, that's just about the time, we're ready to roll, let's go get them. And eight years later, we are here today to say that the regional aviation- And eight years later, we are here today to say that the regional aviation plan has succeeded. And it succeeded because Ruth Galanter had the courage to stand out and say, we didn't have to do it the way that it was proposed. She showed me real leadership. She showed me the courage to fight for the people that not only lived in the city of Los Angeles, but the thousands of us that lived around this airport. She is my inspiration. She is the reason we have fought this battle so successfully. Three years ago, we already gave Ruth Galanter the key to El Segundo. Today, we're giving her the key to our hearts. We're going to miss her, and we love her. Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you, Mike.
Don't go away. Go ahead, Kelly.
I just want to join in what the mayor so eloquently said, this fight would never have succeeded, and never would we have come to the accommodations of the city of Los Angeles and worked jointly with the city were it not for Councilwoman Ruth Galanter, and we really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Don't forget the trees on Imperial.
Thank you.
Let me, let me just say before they disappear that, first of all, I want to say thank you. But I wasn't kidding about Mike being my alter ego on this issue, and it's really been a, I hope, a model for the future of Los Angeles to have a partnership with the city of El Segundo. We used to fight with them over everything. It was very time consuming and not very productive. And I'm very proud of the fact that one reason I don't have to run for the state assembly is that Mike Gordon's going to be, when George Nocano is termed out, Mike Gordon's going to be the next representative for this whole area in Sacramento and for my district as well. So, at least I hope you are. So thank you for this.
Thank you. All right, another elected official from a neighboring city, Mayor Jeff Prang from the city of West Hollywood.
Madam President, honorable members of the council, I'm pleased to be back here. As many of you know, I worked for the city of Los Angeles for the city council for four years, for Councilmember Ruth Galanter. It was the best job of my life, but don't disrespect my current boss, Sheriff Baca, but I'm really glad to be back here today to say a few nice things about my former boss and my friend Ruth Galanter. Probably, there's a number of nice things I want to say, but probably the best tribute isn't said in words, it's a visual. I think you just need to look at the number of Ruth Galanter alumni who are here today to see Ruth off, people who worked for, like me, who are so proud of what we learned and so proud of our experience with her. There's a number of them scattered throughout the room, and I think that's one of the finest testaments that you could have here today. I'm here not only as an alumni of Ruth Galanter's staff, I'm also the mayor of the city of West Hollywood. And I know that because of my experience working for Ruth, that I am a better policymaker, I am a better elected official, and I am a better person for having worked here at the city of Los Angeles, for having learned from you and having been associated with you. And I think probably one of the best testaments that I can offer to you from me is that I think West Hollywood, a separate city, is a better place today because I could not have been there if I had not learned what I learned from you. I could not be as effective as I am on the city council if I had not learned from you. And the lessons I learned here in this very chamber and your office, I take with me every day when I work at the city of West Hollywood. And so, your legacies are in people, they're in things, and they're in other cities. And I'm really pleased to be here after receiving a half a dozen certificates and commendations from you for my efforts, to be able to be an elected official as mayor and to present you with a commendation from my city, this proclamation from the city of West Hollywood.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. And now for many of the people in the audience, it's your turn. Let me start, and I'm going to call, call you three at a time so that you can come up and stand behind the microphone. Gwen Vuchas, Ruth Lansford, and from up north, Harley Jim Bowling.
Okay. Come, I want you to come a little closer here. I'm here, there may be other people from Westchester Play at L.A. that are going to speak, I'm not sure, but I am here to speak on behalf of the Westchester Play at L.A. community and the chamber and the neighborhood council and all of our organizations and residents. And that is, I think as we're all growing up, we have dreams of becoming something, and I'm sure that most of us want to know if we can make a difference. And you look at that big world out there and think, am I really going to make a difference? I'm here to let you know, Ruth, you have made a difference in Westchester Play at L.A., and you have left a huge legacy. And every time we look around at the recruit training center, the new library, the scaled down version of Play Vista, the fight against LAX expansion, Lincoln Boulevard.
Movie theaters.
Movie theaters, Sepulveda Boulevard, interim control ordinance, and I could go on and on and on. Your legacy is there, the Bull and the Wetlands, we will always think of you, we won't forget you, and in your spare time, when this is all over since you're a West Side resident, we'll take, take you to join us in our fight against LAX expansion.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you, Gwen.
You've been wonderful and a great friend.
Ruth Lansford.
I guess we're at the point where it's all been said, but everybody hasn't said it yet. But at any rate, I want to say that Ruth was a friend of the Biona Wetlands long before she ever dreamed of running for the city council, and if it hadn't been for her, they would have been destroyed long ago because a previous plan had been approved. And when she came in, she supported our lawsuit and stopped that plan on its tracks. So we're very, very grateful to Ruth for everything she's done for Friends of Biona Wetlands, and I'm sure she's going to continue doing it. I think today is kind of a graduation for Ruth because I think she's going to go on to even bigger and better things, and we thank her very, very much.
Thank you, Ruth.
Harley Jim Bowling, and after him will be Alan Lorenz, Marvin Schulman, and Melody McCormick.
Oh, hey, okay, good. Hi, Ruth. I have the honor of representing.
Don't pay you all of that.
It'll go fast. I have the honor of representing the Mono Lake Committee in celebrating your career on the city council. You've been a friend of Mono Lake from the early days. Your efforts have ranged from negotiating agreements with the Department of Water and Power and shepherding water-saving ordinances through the city council. You've helped Mono Lake and the city of Los Angeles have a brighter future and a wetter future. I also represent the Los Angeles Water Conservation Council, which was founded by the Mono Lake Committee and all the community-based organizations that have been involved in the ultra-low flush toilet distribution program, which you helped start. These groups include Madres de Leste de los Angeles, Santa Isabel, Asian American Drug Abuse Program, Adro Environmental, Calvary Baptist Homes, Korean Youth and Community Center, Community Enhancement Services, Watts Labor Community Action Committee, and Iglesia Por De Dios. We all thank you for your ongoing work to save water and create community jobs. Through the effects of water use efficiency ordinances you championed, you have helped us bring us into the 21st century using the same amount of water per year that we used in 1970 while adding more than a million people to the city of Los Angeles. That's a good reason to wear your honorary title of Toilet Queen with pride. As you said, the water supply of tomorrow is the water that's already here. This captures a sea change in water policy that has made this city the city of angels and Southern California world leaders in water use efficiency. On behalf of Mono Lake and all of us, including future generations whose water future is more secure because of you, I thank you. Now, we've already, we've already given you our highest award, which is.
I have it.
The Defender of the Trust Award. So I have no plaque for you, but I am authorized to give you a song, which comes from our partners in water conservation in the South, in South Africa. So here goes. I'm going to translate that loose.
I'm going to sing the whole thing again.
No, 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 just, just, I'm going to translate it loosely as, thanks for saving the water and answering our prayers.
Thank you. Mr. Alan Lorenz.
It is. That's a tough act to follow. Good morning, Madam President, council members. I'm Alan Lorenz, and I'm honored to be here today on behalf of the Los Angeles World Airports and the Board of Airport Commissioners. I would like to give a huge thank you to Councilwoman Ruth Galanter for her relentless support of airport environmental and community programs. During her 16-year tenure with the Los Angeles City Council, and more specifically, her work and leadership on the council's Committee on Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources, Councilwoman Galanter oversaw the work of the Los Angeles World Airports. In such a capacity, Ruth managed to increase the standards of airport responsiveness and responsibility to the communities and the natural resources surrounding LAX and Van Nuys. For example, during her tenure, the El Segundo Dunes Preserve, which is owned and maintained by LAWA, doubled in size. The entire LAX free shuttle was replaced with buses that run on compressed natural gas. Ruth also worked hand in hand with LAX to develop a comprehensive recycling program, which reached a solid waste diversion rate of 67%, which is way above the 50% state requirement. This represents approximately 50,000 tons of solid waste that is diverted from the landfills to be used productively elsewhere. Ruth was also instrumental in LAWA's water conservation. Through her efforts and in collaboration with the Department of Public Works, LAX was the first major property on the West Side to use recycled water for landscape irrigation. Equally as important has been Ruth's commitment to airport neighbors. In 1996, Ruth worked with the mayor's office to persuade LAWA to initiate its own residential sound insulation program. Since then, close to 3,000 residential units have been soundproofed, and a similar program has now been initiated for LAWA's neighbors in Van Nuys. As an airport commissioner, as well as a resident in the beautiful neighborhood of Westchester, I can comfortably say that Ruth's, with Ruth's guidance and support, LAX has become a greener airport, reducing waste, conserving water, improving air quality, and reducing noise. This is Ruth's legacy at LAX, and for that, we thank her and wish her well in her next endeavor. Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you, Alan. Marvin Schulman, and then Melody McCormick.
My name is Marvin Schulman. I've had a chance to observe Ruth from a lot of different perspectives, and so it's an honor to speak here today. First, as a teacher in the old Sixth Council District at Westchester High School, we always found Ruth and her Westchester office to be extremely responsive to what we needed, what we wanted, to our concerns. Another chance of looking at Ruth was as a member of one of her CPACs. And for five years, we looked at the encyclopedic mind of Mario Yarovich explaining things, telling us what to do, how to do it, what the issues were. And one of the things about the CPAC was, those people who constantly, once a month showed up at those meetings knew that Ruth would listen, listen to both sides, and had her mind made up only after looking at all the issues. For the last five years, I've been fortunate to work in the San Fernando Valley as a mentor teacher, encouraging and helping brand-new teachers at Pacoima Middle School. And before going to school, every morning in the valley, I would open up the pages of the Daily News. Before that time, I never smiled when I looked at the Daily News, but I smiled when I looked at the Daily News because on the news pages and on the editorial pages, there were constant commendations for Ruth for her service, including things that she said she would not do. And so, to look at the Daily News with a smile was something new for me. There is no job beyond Ruth's talent and commitment. Two of her former colleagues are members of the County Board of Supervisors. One of her former colleagues spoke here, who was the city controller of the city of L.A. One of her former colleagues is a state senator. Two of them are state assembly members. There perhaps is one job beyond Ruth's capability, though, and that's serving on the California High Speed Rail Authority. However, I think she'll get over that one. It's a pleasure to be here in this city hall, which is the jewel of the skyline of Los Angeles. The jewel of the skyline of the city of London is St. Paul's Cathedral, the work of Sir Christopher Wren, one of the great architects of Europe. And there's a small plaque in the basement of St. Paul's Cathedral, which says the following about Sir Christopher Wren. If you seek his monument, look around you. Well, for those of us who know the old Sixth Council District and the new Sixth Council District has been served so well by Ruth, if you seek her monument, look around you. Congratulations, Ruth, on a wonderful career in public service so far.
Melody McCormick, who will be followed by Diane Uye, Steve Clare, and Mary Lou Crockett.
These are the people who really do the recycling.
Good afternoon. My name is Melody McCormick, and I am the manager of the city facilities recycling program. With me is my director, Tony Royster, the general manager of general services, John McCree, and yes, more importantly, the recycling crews from not only our city facilities group, but our special events recycling crew as well. And we're here today to honor you and to present you with an award that we apologize, it got much bigger than we had originally planned. However.
There's a lot of waste in the city.
However, yes, it is made of recycled waste, and its size is really a testament to your commitment to recycling because it is made, the base of it is made from the over 50 recycling ordinances that you have championed throughout your years here with the city council. When I sat down to research your award with the National Recycling Coalition last year, I was pleasantly surprised. I ended up with 50 pieces of legislation that you had sponsored just on recycling issues alone. We took those pieces of legislation and we used that as the base of this award, and then everything that you see placed upon it, our materials that we've added to the city facilities recycling program over the years, beverage containers, cardboard, paper products. There are items here that represent special events, all of the beverage containers. We made a point to include Coke because that was a fun campaign that we worked on together. The Buy Recycle 2000 Challenge is represented by that frame that you see. We buy recycled in the city. I know you've challenged all city employees to do the same. And we present this to you because it is with your courageous and innovative approach to recycling that has created all of the programs that are now running throughout the city today. And we've been honored to serve in them, and our commitment to you is that while we're at 60% diversion rate, we're going to continue this legacy, and we're going to push forward until we get to 100%. So we leave you with that. Like I said, if you're trying to figure out where you're going to hang this, you only yourself to blame. Its size is.
of the city in your capacity as a city council person anymore. But I want to focus in Venice and in affordable housing, and I'm happy to say, touch on a few things that haven't been mentioned, but I think are really important, certainly important to all of us in Venice. And the first is to thank you, I'm going to read this because, for getting the city to comply with California law requiring the preservation and construction of affordable housing in the coastal zone. It was a huge struggle. Unfortunately, it took a lawsuit, but in the end, you brought the city and the community together to create a settlement that finally guarantees that the law will be enforced. That settlement, which mandates that low-income housing be included in every new construction project over 10 units in the coastal zone, is a model for now, for efforts now underway to create a citywide inclusionary housing policy. Second, really important to us, thank you for all your leadership and support for the Venice Community Housing Corporation. It was absolutely essential to our growth and to our success over the years. You and the Los Angeles Community Design Center brought us our very first affordable housing development opportunity at 102 Navy Street, where we worked together to build 14 units of housing for very low-income and formerly homeless people. You made it possible for VCHC to develop 25 units of family housing at Fourth and Sunset Tabor Courts. It was on the video in Venice, and to create a 32-bed transitional housing facility for homeless women and their children at Westminster Avenue in Venice. In neighboring Santa Monica, your support, including your support for the city's Affordable Housing Incentive Ordinance, made it possible for VCHC to develop 30 units of housing at Washington Place, a beautiful development that not only provides housing for low-income working families, but also offers them supportive services and after-school programs for children in that development and the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you for your rock-solid determination to prevent the destruction of 795 units of affordable housing at Lincoln Place in Venice. Without your leadership, that housing would have been long gone. Thank you for your continuing support for the preservation of the affordability restrictions of 246 units of HUD-subsidized housing in Venice, the Holiday Venice Apartments. Without your active and vocal opposition to the owner's many efforts to prepay the mortgages and take the rents to market, we would have lost an invaluable affordable housing resource. And I'm very proud and very appreciative that the City Council as a whole has finally identified the preservation of these kinds of affordable housing developments as a priority citywide. And on behalf of the Venice tenants and all the tenants in the city of Los Angeles, I want to thank you for your ongoing efforts to preserve the Los Angeles Rent Stabilize Ordinance and strengthen it to protect tenants from unconscionable rent increases and arbitrary and unlawful evictions. More things to say, but I know, I want to give others a chance on closing, I don't need to say, don't be a stranger. You're a longtime Venice resident. I know you have an abiding concern for our community, and we're going to continue to draw on you for your leadership and support for our continuing work. I do want to say, on behalf of all the people of this city who believe that diversity is a good thing and that we all benefit from living in a neighborhood that includes all income brackets, all races, different cultures, and an abundance of ideas and visions for our shared future, thank you for helping to keep Venice in all its wackiness, a dynamic, exciting, wonderful place to live, a welcoming destination for the rainbow of people who make up this city, and a tourist attraction for people the world over. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mary Lou Crockett, who will be followed by Robert Ackerman, Susan Hillman, and Carol Tanto.
Thank you. Ruth, thank you very much for your service. When you came in, I was on the library commission, and you never missed a beat and greeted me with such graciousness and allowed me to work for you and our city, and I appreciated that. And in tribute to that, I would like to give a check for you to contribute to the Friends of the Library in Venice for $500, and however you want to designate that. You know, awards with cash, I think, are always good, and now I can do that. I'd also like to do the same thing on the behalf of the Westchester Loyola Village Friends of the Library. We just opened, and I'd like to thank you very, very much and your staff on being truly a library for the community. It's just wonderful. And I'd like you then to be able to give this $1,000 check to the Friends in your name and designate it the way you would like to have it. I learned that by giving what you believe in is the way our city is great. I will look forward to walking on the Ruth Galanter Pier with my great-grandchildren, now that my grandchildren, I used to always say on the Airport Commission, I was waiting for my grandchildren to be born and hopefully something would be done. And I'd like to thank you for carrying out the soundproofing program, even though it kind of broke my heart that we had to give in, but it's working out to be a very, very good thing. So thank you very much, and many other things. I could go on with historical society. Hundreds of certificates were given because your staff and you were willing to commemorate those people that built such a wonderful community in Westchester and Plaid-Ory. Thank you for tending to every detail and caring about us the way you have over these years. Thank you.
I just want the Ethics Commission to take note. These are not made out to Ruth Galanter. They are made out to the Friends of the respective libraries. And Mary Lou, I want to say thank you. That's a wonderful way to honor me, and I will, of course, take the books out and get my money's worth, your money's worth. Robert Ackerman.
Thank you. I'm a lifelong resident of Westchester, and for half my life, 16 years, Ruth, you've represented me and my community on the City Council. I'm very grateful for that. Our community's always been concerned about overdevelopment and being overrun with too much traffic, and Ruth here has always been sensitive and sensible about development issues, and that's why she was so successful in scaling back Playa Vista, the Howard Hughes Center, and setting up community advisory committees to look at development projects, and we're very appreciative from that. And Sepulveda Boulevard, too, when it was going to be expanded, you not only put a stop to it, but you let the community decide in terms of how they wanted to improve it. And I think that's four-sided leadership. But I think the one issue that Ruth will be most remembered for is her steadfast opposition to LAX expansion and her support for the utilization of our outlying airports in Ontario and Palmdale. And this City Council has not had a better advocate for Palmdale Airport than Ruth Galanter. And although she's retiring, we need all the members of the City Councils to be staunch advocates for Palmdale Airport. Thank you, Ruth, and your staff for your service. And one day, I hope to be before this council to tell you about the announcement of an airline based at Palmdale Airport called Air Palmdale. So thank you. And thank you, Ruth, you and your staff.
Susan Hillman.
He's serious. He actually is starting an airline.
Hi, Susan. Hi, I'm Susan Millman. I'm a 30-year Venice resident, a family law domestic violence lawyer for the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles, and I was proud to serve as Ruth represented to the Domestic Violence Task Force of the City of Los Angeles. And I'm here today to thank her for all her work, but particularly to acknowledge her support for the prevention of domestic violence and our clinics that help provide restraining orders for battered women and their children to keep them and their kids safe. So on behalf of survivors of domestic violence and the advocates that helped them, I thank Ruth for her commitment to this issue and for all issues that have helped advance the fight for social and economic justice for all people in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you, Susan.
Carol Tanto, who will be followed by our final three speakers, Teri Tippett, Joel Reynolds, and Dennis Zane.
Good afternoon, I guess it is by now. I think over the last 16 years that my life has become very inextricably entwined with Ruth and her office, wearing a lot of different hats, not the least of which is the Domestic Violence Task Force that Susan and I both represent Ruth on. But additionally, I'm a business owner in the community, and I just would like to attest to the fact that Ruth really does shop LA, because she's wearing something from my store. But I would like to just talk about elected office in this city, and this is really a message for all elected officials here. Many years ago, at one of the debates, at one of the elections that Ruth won, she made a statement discerning the difference between being a public servant and being a public leader. And I think there's really something to pay attention to there. You're not necessarily electing a public servant. You really want somebody to lead you, wants to make sure that you know what's good for you. And I think that's what everybody's been saying here, that Ruth is very good at telling you what's good for you. Also, people often ask me with regard to city elections who I'm going to vote for, and my pat answer is the person who will return my phone calls. And I want you to all think about that, okay? My phone calls have always been returned by Ruth and her staff, and that just counts for a huge amount. And we're going to miss her. We had a goodbye party for her about a year ago, so there was a lot of that stuff there. Thank you.
Teri Tippett, followed by Joel Reynolds.
Yes, it's you. It's my turn. Welcome back. Welcome back. Welcome back to the Sixth Council. Ruth, I go back to when you were sitting in my house the first time, and you were flipping through my Bronx book, and she said, "What do you have this book for?" I said, "I was born in the Bronx." And that's when Ruth and I really started our bonding, and I guess that's why I'm accused, as you are, of not having too much finesse, that we just go in and we do it and we get it done and pick up the dead bodies as we go. It's the Bronx-ness in us. There's three things that I wanted to let the world know about. One is the Neighborhood Overlay District that you created when the city did not have money anymore for specific plans. And for those of us who were waiting for a specific plan, we thought, oh my God, what's going to happen to our area? And Ruth came up with the Neighborhood Overlay District, and the Pico Westwood area around the West Side Pavilion is the first, was the first, and the model for it. And we worked very hard with your staff. Most of you are still here, learning to write language for the city. And now there are other ones. I run into people all the time that tell me because of that they've created their area, and so I'm thankful for that. And number two, when I wanted to create a green belt on the abandoned railroad tracks that ran through our area, and the first time I wrote a grant and got some money from Caltrans, and then you helped us bring the city, the MTA, Caltrans, all the different agencies together, because everyone told me I could not do it, except you.
That's the first mistake. Everybody learns about you, Teri, that it's a waste of time to say no.
Yeah, if you say no, you're just saying, go ahead and do it. So we had this beautiful green belt that's now in two years, and the trees are just coming in great, and everything's beautiful. And the third thing is the library we have because of you, the new library. And of course, last year, I had a very difficult year, and Ruth, you planted that tree.
Did we get through the year okay?
It was a difficult year for both of us.
Yeah, well, yours was nice.
But I'll never, I'll never forget our friendship and what you've done.
Thank you. Dennis Zane, and the final speaker will be Mindy Meyer. It doesn't look like Dennis Zane is coming forward. This is Joel Reynolds.
My name is Joel Reynolds. I'm a senior attorney with the Natural Resources Defense Council. But I want to just say a few words here today as a 23-year resident of Venice Beach. A lot has been said about a lot of the major issues that Ruth's been involved in, LAX expansion, Playa Vista, DWP, and others. But I just want to talk about what a difference Ruth has made in the quality of our daily life in Venice. When I drive along Venice Boulevard under the beautiful native sycamores by the library and the housing, we think of Ruth. When I walk with my kids in the evening in the Venice Canals and realize that it's not a cement marina, but a bucolic and historic area, we think of Ruth Galanter. When we walk along the beaches and we play baseball in the evenings on the sand and we realize that Ruth found someplace else for the dogs to run free so that we could play on the beaches, we thank Ruth Galanter. When we look at the pier and we look at the boardwalk and we enjoy Bayona Lagoon, all of this makes us think of Ruth because of the extraordinary impact in her 16 years that she's had on the quality of life in Venice for everybody who lives there, for me, for my family, for my children. I just wanted to come down here today and say how much we appreciate what you've done, not just on the big issues, but on all the things that affect the daily life in Venice Beach. And you are literally irreplaceable, and we are enormously grateful for what you've done. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Denny Zane. I'm here to say today that I am so proud to have had the opportunity to follow in Ruth Galanter's wake most of my adult life. As you, many of you know, she was a Santa Monica activist before she moved to Los Angeles. We followed in her wake there on affordable housing and saving the pier and many quality of life issues there. Few people know that Ruth has the distinction of perhaps being one of two people when they moved from Santa Monica to Los Angeles to have merited, a block and a half, to have merited a front-page story on the Evening Outlook. They were celebrating the loss of one of the staunchest and most effective community activists in the city's history. Santa Monica's loss was Los Angeles's gain. I am very proud to be an admirer and a follower of Ruth Galanter. There are two peers on our coast that she deserves credit for saving. One is in Venice, and the other is in Santa Monica. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zane. Next, Mindy Meyer, to be followed by Stacy Bolden.
Hi, my name is Mindy Meyer, and I'm a resident of Venice, and I've lived there about as long as you've been councilmember. And I'm going to do something unusual and be very brief. I just want to thank you so much for your leadership. I didn't believe much in city government, and I decided I wanted to plant some trees. And I wrote a lot of different elected officials that I was going to do that, and you were the only person who wrote back. And you told me if I needed help to let you know, and I needed some help, and so I let you know, and you were there for me. And from that point on, your office has always been supportive. They put me on board so I could learn more about how the city government works. When we walk along the beaches and we play baseball in the evenings on the sand, and we realize that Ruth found someplace else for the dogs to run free, so that we could play on the beaches, we thank Ruth Galanter. When we look at the pier, and we look at the boardwalk, and we enjoy Bayona Lagoon, all of this makes us think of Ruth, because of the extraordinary impact in her 16 years that she's had on the quality of life in Venice. For everybody who lives there, for me, for my family, for my children, I just wanted to come down here today and say how much we appreciate what you've done. Not just on the big issues, but on all the things that affect the daily life in Venice Beach. And you are literally irreplaceable, and we are enormously grateful for what you've done.
Thank you Joel.
Thank you.
My name is Dennis Zane. I'm here to say today that I am so proud of had the opportunity to follow in Ruth Galanter's wake most of my adult life. As you, many of you know, she was a Santa Monica activist before she moved to Los Angeles. We followed in her wake there on affordable housing, and saving the pier, and many quality of life issues there. Few people know that Ruth has the distinction of perhaps being one of two people when they moved from Santa Monica to Los Angeles, to have merited, a block and a half, to have merited a front-page story on the Evening Outlook. They were celebrating the loss of one of the staunchest and most effective community activists in the city's history. Santa Monica's loss was Los Angeles's gain. I am very proud to be an admirer and a follower of Ruth Galanter. There are two peers on our coast that she deserves credit for saving. One is in Venice, and the other is in Santa Monica. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zane. Next, Mindy Meyer, to be followed by Stacy Bolden.
Hi, my name is Mindy Meyer, and I'm a resident of Venice, and I've lived there about as long as you've been council member. And I'm going to do something unusual and be very brief. I just want to thank you so much for your leadership. I didn't believe much in city government, and I decided I wanted to plant some trees. And I wrote a lot of different elected officials that I was going to do that, and you were the only person who wrote back. And you told me if I needed help, to let you know. And I needed some help, and so I let you know, and you were there for me. And from that point on, your office has always been supportive. They put me on board, so I could learn more about how the city government works. And now, when I want to get things done, I know how to do it, and I know because of you. So I just want to thank you for everything that you've contributed to the community of Venice, and for all the things you've contributed to me. Thanks.
I just want to say, as soon as we find somebody who wants to do something, one thing we learned very early is we put you to work. What you take care of, I don't have to.
Thank you very much. Stacy Bolden, the City Attorney's Office.
Good afternoon. I'm here today representing California State Attorney General Bill Lockyer, and he sends his very best wishes to you today. I'm here on his behalf to thank you for your 16 years of tireless and dedicated service to the City of Los Angeles and to the state of, people of the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you Stacy.
Thank you from the Attorney General's Office, not the City Attorney's Office.
I know, it's ours.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Galanter, the microphone is yours.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to all of you for sitting through what turned out to be a much longer program than I anticipated here. And of course, we're not done yet, because although that was the most fun for me, now we come to the part that's really sad for me. Mindful of my advice to Eric, that the best speech is usually the one you don't give, I'm not going to forego this opportunity, since it's my last one, but I will try to hit the highlights and skip the rest. I want to say thank you to a lot of people. This is, I want to start by saying that the last time I was in the chamber for something like this, I couldn't speak. I could only stand up for a very short time. My office was actually right across the hall in what is now the conference room, because there were 15 council members in 14 offices, and they figured that that was about as far as I could walk. That was when I came straight out of the hospital, straight into this chamber. And I want to tell you, it's a lot more fun this way. And this helps to erase some of the memory of that. But I mostly want to say thank you to a number of people in City Hall, and a whole lot of people who are not regularly in City Hall, although some of them are here today. 16 years here has been, as I mentioned to Nate the other day, a character building experience, but it's also been a very rewarding experience. I've learned, I've had the opportunity to learn more about how a city works than most people ever get to do. And I want to urge all of you to seize the time while you are on the City Council, go see everything. I have been inside a sewer pipe before the sewage got in there. Felicia Marcus and I went in to check it out. I have been, I have not been to the coal mine. I have been to various of our power plants, not Mojave. I was promised a trip, but I didn't get to Mojave. I have been in the harbor department, backstage at all kinds of water and power facilities. These are fascinating things to see. Many of them are available to the public, but we don't, we often forget to tell the public about how the city actually runs. It's very educational to see a sewage treatment plant, and to appreciate the fact that, you should pardon the toilet reference again, that when you flush the toilet, it's got to go somewhere, and there are a lot of us here. People wonder where their money is going. It is a very wonderful thing to go and see where our money goes, and why we need to spend this money. And so let me put in a plug here. If you don't do something, the water system is going to go broke in two years, and I'm still trying to find out what's going to happen to my water service if the water system goes broke. Just don't let it happen. And you will have to find a way to do that, because the council doesn't have direct jurisdiction over that. I don't know how you're going to do that, but it's not my problem. It will be my problem, however, as a consumer. So there are a lot of challenges ahead. The city is a complex place. It's a fascinating place. I think this is the most interesting city in the country, because everything that happens, everything that changes, changes here first and fastest. And so we are all privileged, everybody in the city, even when we get frustrated and angry, we are actually very privileged to see the future, because we're living it here all the time. I have a cousin in Pittsburgh who swears he'll never set foot in California, and I said, "Why not?" And he said, "If I just wait, it all gets here eventually." And he gave me a couple of examples, juice bars, for example. The fact is, trends start here, population changes start here, cultural things happen here first. This is really where the future happens. And we talk a lot about the pressures of growth, the pressures of our own population and the people who aren't here yet but would like to be here. Let me tell you guys, this is nothing compared to what's going on in the developing world. We need to use the little bit of leeway that we have to help the rest of the world understand where we've gone wrong and where we've fixed it, so that people in the rest of the world don't have to make the mistakes that have been made here in the past. We've done very well as a city, I think. I'm very proud to have been a part of it. I do remember, one of the few things that I remember from that first day, standing at this podium, actually, the horseshoe was over there and I was standing over there. But I remember a huge crowd cheering, for which I'm very grateful. And I remember looking around at a whole group of people who had mostly, of course, supported the incumbent, and I could see them all counting. Every single one of them had noticed, as you know, no matter what a politician is interested in, everybody can count. And they had seen that 58%, and suddenly, really overnight, the council became an environmentalist council. And you have continued that tradition for all this time, and I'm sure that the best is yet to come. But I'm very proud to have been in on the base. Let me say again, as we have all said, none of this would be possible without a lot of help and a lot of support. So I want to start by saying thank you to the city staff, of whom there are, as you know, thousands. And I want to mention, for example, the people sitting in the front of the room here, not Eric, the ones down the next tier here, the clerk's office, the city attorney's office, the people, the CLA's office, the people who keep us going. We all get to make the speeches, they have to make sure the motions get to where they're supposed to go, they have to make sure that they get filed, that the 30-day mandate ordinance takes effect actually happens. There's just a lot of mechanics to running the city. And many of the people are in a position to teach us, as we become council members, as we change committees. The recycling folks who were here earlier taught me a lot. I like to think I taught them some things too, but we actually worked this all out together, because they have to implement the programs. They're the ones who can tell you what works and what doesn't work. Same thing at water and power. I want to say that there are a lot of people not here today, who, because they're not around anymore, who helped to shape my view of how to be a council member. John, I am going to cry over this one. John Ferraro, of course, came up to me that first day and he said, I'd never met him before. He came up to me and he said, "Congratulations, now go get better, it'll all still be waiting for you when you feel a little better." And of course, he was right, it all still was. And when something happened, and he wasn't sure I understood the political implications, he beckoned me up to the chair, and he said, "Now let me explain something to you. You do understand that this particular thing was an insult." And I said, "Well, no, why was it an insult?" And he explained it. And I said, "What am I supposed to do about it?" And he explained that as well. And I think I owe Mr. Deaton a debt of gratitude for helping John with that explanation to me. It wound up in charter reform, and if you want to hear the story, we'll do that another time. Ron and the CLA's office, of course, tell me what I think on a regular basis, and sometimes they're right, sometimes they're not. But none of this would happen, none of, the city would not run. We don't actually run the city. The people who run the city are the people who do the actual work. The guys who pick up the recycling containers, the people who have to implement the programs that we establish, the people who have to get the city hall renovated, who have to do all those other things. Without the Bureau of Engineering, there would be no canal restoration. So I want to say thank you to all of them, and especially the guys in the parking garage who are so nice to me every day. I also want to say thank you to my very own city staff, family. We have, as somebody mentioned, Jeff mentioned earlier, we have a lot of alumni here today, and I don't have plaques for the alumni, but if I could ask my alumni to stand up, if they're still here, there's one, two, three. Hello Dana. Some of these people are recent alumni, some of them go a lot farther back. All of them have played a very important role in providing services to the people of all of the sixth districts. The current crop is the crop that I particularly want to thank, and if you'll hand me those, we'll just do them in whatever order we've got here. Now, one thing that has happened to me in 16 years is I've aged a lot, so I have to put my glasses on here. You may remember, some of you may remember, that a couple of weeks ago, we did go through acknowledging the field staff. The field staff are the people out in the communities, the people who made the trek from the west side to the valley, and did a lot. And so today, this is, this crop is the people who are, who work here in City Hall. Let me start with Inga. Inga Detlifson has been our, an intern in our office, and she graduated from UCLA in 2002. And she has done one of those jobs, one of those thankless jobs for which I want to thank you. She has catalogued everything. And without her work of doing that, we couldn't have produced the book that you all have, we could not have produced the video. And Inga is about to begin a master's program, and I hope the typo in here is not in here. No, it's not, it's okay. So Inga, I want to say thank you for your hard work, for getting it all done without complaining, and mostly just for getting it all done. And I want to wish you all the best at UCLA. Okay, thank you. Next. Okay. Carol. Where's Carol? Carol, where are you? Now, Carol is one of the people, actually, I didn't mention in my discussions of people who went before, I didn't mention Councilwoman Bernardi, who actually made me the chairman of the Coastal Commission and kept me in there when the other local government people wanted to throw me out. But Carol used to run Mr. Bernardi's office, and she has been basically keeping me functional now for, how long? A long time, 10 years, yes. Well, no wonder we both look older. We could not, our office could not function without Carol. Carol, you really have been just wonderful. She has handled four moves, three moves, I don't know. Somehow, you know, I come in, and it seems to be happening, and that's really because of you. So I want to say thank you for everything you've done. Of course, you're not finished for another 48 hours or so, but, and I'm sure there's plenty left, but you really have been a wonderful asset to the City of Los Angeles, and helped me remember what Ernie would have said if he were here. And you've just been great, and I don't know what else to say to you, except I'm sorry to lose you, I don't know how I'm going to take care of myself. Carol is going to enjoy a well-deserved retirement. As you'll notice, a number of my staff are doing it. You want to do this one next? Okay, Sandy. Sandy Anguiano has been with me since the beginning. There are two of them still, who've been around forever. Sandy started out as the receptionist, and this was when every homeless person in America was on Venice Beach, and everybody else in Venice was calling up, some of them eight or nine times a day. And the rest of us used to stand around and listen to Sandy answer the phone, because, and I still have never figured out how you do this, although you did tell me, because she could talk nicely to all of them. They were all screaming at her. And she, they wanted to scream at me, but she was in the way, so they screamed at her. And she managed somehow to get them all to calm down. And I asked her once how she did that, I don't know if you remember what I said, you said to me, "Well, they seem so upset, and somebody ought to listen to them." And starting from that, Sandy has, yes, indeed, that was a very important point. So Sandy, you taught all, from the beginning, you taught a lot of the rest of us, who are all brand-new in City Hall, how to, how to respect our constituents, even when they were screaming at us, because they were legitimately frustrated. And Sandy has gone on to do a whole variety of tasks in my office. She's beloved across the city, because she's the person who gets the buses, and I get, I get more mail about Sandy than anybody else. So Sandy, thank you for sticking it out all these years. She was half of, I think, the only mother-daughter team in the same office for a long time. Amanda is now working in the mayor's office. Sandy is also going to get to retire and be a grandmother yet again. How many are we up to?
Five.
Five grandchildren. Does she look old enough? Sandy, thank you so much for everything you've done. Have a wonderful retirement, and relax.
Sixteen years, I know.
Leah Wyman is one of our newer employees. She came in, in part of a crisis, as the, my term was winding down, and I was beginning to wonder if anybody would be willing to take on working in a job that they knew wasn't going to last very long. And Leah came in and threw herself into her job as my communications deputy with incredible drive. She's one of these people who, if you ask her to do something, she doesn't quit till it's done. And she's actually about to go on to, she's, I think, the only one of us, of the current staff, who's about to go back to school, but Leah is on her way to Harvard. Sorry, it isn't Yale, but that's the way it goes. She is, she's on her way to Harvard to get a master's degree. She already has one in communications, and she taught at Long Beach State for a while in that. But after an experience in City Hall, in the midst of flux and change, she's decided that a master's degree in, what do they call it? Public administration. This is one of these mid-career things. So she's on her way to Cambridge, and all the rest of us are terribly, terribly jealous. Except in February, we won't be jealous in February. It snows a lot in February. So Leah, I want to say thank you for your hard work, your loyalty, your dedication, your willingness to pitch in. We've sometimes asked you to do things that aren't exactly a communications deputy's job, and you've done those with the same dedication. So I wish you all the best, and hope you have a great time. And be sure to get a jacket, earmuffs, and boots for the rain. Congratulations, and thank you. There is an end to this, guys, but it's a few certificates away. Mario. You know, it's occasionally embarrassing to have, have one of your staff members get more applause than you do, but he deserves it. He really does deserve it. Mario Yuravich, when I first met him, was Joan Flores's planning deputy. And I was sitting on the planning committee with Bernson telling me how to respond to things. And I'm not sure I fully appreciated you in those days, but boy, did I get an appreciation when, when after Joan left the council, Mario came around looking for a job, and we didn't have the planning spot open at the moment. So I asked him if he'd be willing to be a constituent deputy, and he, he did, he said he would do it. And people used to stop me on the street and say, "Where did you find this guy? He's so wonderful." So those people were heartbroken when you became the planning deputy. But, and an enormous number of people who have worked with Mario, both the constituents who were worried about developer, about development, the developers who had to face those constituents, and a lot of people in the city staff know that Mario really is a genius at this stuff. He understands all, thank goodness, he understands all the details of zoning ordinances, which I have never had to learn, because I just asked him. I hate those details, but he really understands them all. And he's also extremely good at figuring out what is the solution to the problem that will work, and then persuading everybody on whatever side of the argument, that that is the solution that will work, and then he helps us get it done. So Mario, I don't know what to say. Mario's retiring, none of you are going to get him. But that's your loss. It's been wonderful having you on my staff, and I really appreciate everything that you've done. I especially appreciate... I especially appreciate the things that you've saved me from having to do, and I wish you all the best. Where's Bessna? You want to come stand up here and get in the picture? Bring the whole family up. No? Well, you have to move fast, or we're moving on, so.
That's the word.
I just want to say a word here. I really had a pleasure and honor to work for three wonderful council members, John S. Gibson Jr. at first, Joan Flores, and of course, the last and my favorite, Councilwoman Galanter. When I came and assumed the planning position, I was somewhat skeptical here. Here's a person who has a master's degree and I'm coming in, but I found it to be really an asset to me, that I didn't have to go and explain too many things because she knew all of that that was there, so we worked really hard together. But aside from that, I am going to miss the city, I'm going to miss some of the constituents, maybe most of them. But at the same time, I think we all heard today so many attributes to this wonderful lady, Councilwoman Galanter, about her leadership, about her backbone, about her intelligence, about her integrity, about her straightforwardness, and to some, I don't even say that she's rough around the edges, but boy, she's really fuzzy and warm inside, has a beautiful heart and soul.
I didn't pay him for that. He doesn't work for me anymore. John? All of you in the chamber, of course, know John Howland, who has been my legislative deputy, and so you probably know him better than anything. Stop looking at the checks. They're not made out to you either. John really has done a wonderful job here, and I hope that the rest of you appreciate him as much as I do. He has this wonderful facility for taking on whatever oddball idea crosses my desk that day and learning enough about it so that we know whether we should do it or not. And once we've decided to do something, he's able to write the motions, he's able to get the background, he's able to handle the mechanics of working with the CLA's office and with all of your offices. And John is about to go private, but before you do that, John, I just want to say thank you for what you've done here. You'll discover over the course of many months and years, looking back over things or reading stuff in the newspapers, how many things you've actually touched in really a very short time on the staff. And so all of you are going to be glad you knew him and sorry you lost him, but he's going private. What can I tell you? So you may see him. You never know. So here it is, John. John also does things, he's one of these people who actually has a life in addition to having a job. He also does things with his life, like volunteer, reading for the blind and dyslexic. And he's been active in a bunch of political campaigns, so he's got the experience, all of you politicians.
You're making me blush.
Oh, good. I've tried to make you blush for the whole time I've known you. Let me see if I can think of something. Never mind. So, John, here. Thank you for all you've done. I hope to stay in touch. I wish you luck in the private sector.
Thank you very much.
It'll be fun. Your public awaits. You thinking of running for office? Audrey is the other person who's been with me from the very beginning, and she and I have had actually a wonderful time together because when she started out, she was very, she was doing basically a clerical job in the office, but she always had this twinkle in her eye, so that I knew that she could detect quickly when somebody was feeding us a line. And she was always much too polite to say anything, and once I asked her why, and she said, "Well, you know, my job is," I'm a whatever your title was then, and the next thing that happened was we had an opening as a legislative deputy, and I went around the office saying, "Now, if anybody on the staff is interested in this job, you have to step up and tell us." And I remember you came in very gingerly, and you said, "You know, I think I might be interested." And we seized upon that because of your ability to cut to the chase and see through all the baloney that people feed you. But then, after a while, it turned out that I had a much more serious issue to deal with in my field operation, which is, as you all know, what gets you reelected. What really gets you reelected is taking care of people's problems. And so I asked Audrey if she would be willing to go out to the field office and use some of that no-nonsense attitude and take care of people's problems. And we hemmed and hawed, and hemmed and hawed, because all her friends were in City Hall and she'd worked here. Finally, she said, "I actually found the note the other day. You wrote me a note that said, 'Okay, I'll do it.'" And so she did. She went out to the Crenshaw Office, which is where she's focused. She also worked in the Oakwood area in Venice and in Mar Vista, and she got a whole lot of things done that would not have been done without that. In the meantime, she also established herself not only as a representative of the city government, but as just who she is, Audrey King, who's got a no-nonsense, let's get it done, and let's have a nice time while we're at it person. The Wendy in question is, used to be her alter ego. She told me that, somebody said, "Hi, Wendy," to her one day, and I said, "Who's Wendy?" And she said, "Oh, well, that's when I'm outside of work. That's the party animal, right?" That's the party animal. Well, what I asked her to do was bring Wendy into the office as well, and so now we have Audrey Wendy, who could tell off the most remarkable people when they were really getting out of line, without their getting mad about it. I don't know how you did that. Everybody gets mad at me. But Audrey really cleaned up a lot of the field operation. She taught a lot of the succeeding field staff what you need to know. She knows everybody in City Hall. She, through her hard work, made me the top fundraiser for the United Negro College Fund two years in a row. Three? No, no wonder it felt like we worked a long time. And she really did that. One of her daughters went to school in one of those colleges, and so she really knew how important it is, and I was very proud to do that, and I probably wouldn't have done it if you hadn't been there, holding my hand, introducing me to all the right people, and reminding me if we hadn't done enough that week. So Audrey, you deserve your retirement. I hope you're going to enjoy it a lot. I know you're going to enjoy it a lot, and I want you to have this, I wanted you to have a long, elaborate resolution, but she was smart enough to take a look at her wall space and say, "Just give me a plaque," which is Audrey to a T. Hold on. Stop that, Nikki, I'm taking my glasses. And finally, we come to Nikki, who is quite a remarkable woman. Let me tell you about this woman. Kleenex is right there. Nikki Tennant combines the best attributes of a commanding officer and a mom. She's, and that's what she does for our office. She keeps everything moving. She's the field marshal, she's the commander-in-chief, and she's also everybody's mom, and she's also my chief censor. Nikki has had a number of different positions in the city of Los Angeles. She, too, worked for Councilwoman Flores, and she brought to my office, Nikki has brought to my office, a lot of skills and experience that she learned in that office while working in my office, first as the Venice deputy, which is, and Westchester, Venice and Westchester, which got her in the middle of, you name it, if it's controversial, she was in the middle of it, the Biona Lagoon. I think Hyperion was done by then. No, Hyperion, too? Wasn't done by then. They're never done. The Canals, Oceanfront Walk, the whole schmear. First, she was the Venice deputy, then she came downtown as the communications deputy and churned out the press releases, talked to the reporters, did all the stuff that happens there, and then, just a couple of years ago, became the chief of staff. And I am so lucky to have you as my chief of staff and my mom. There's not enough you can say about Nikki. And while she was doing this, she also went back to school and got herself a degree in marketing. She's, the airport issue, now let us talk about the airport issue. Since she was getting this degree in marketing, it was a perfect opportunity to take all the things that were going on around the regional airport plan that wasn't and try to turn it into the regional airport plan that was, and she was able to combine both things, which is pretty smart work. So now she has the degree, they can all spell regional, and we still have a long way to go, but it isn't her fault. Nikki has managed our staff, she's hired a whole bunch of people, she managed the move from the west side to the valley, kept us all on track, and she's going to take a little rest, but, because she's about to become a grandmother. Can you believe this? I mean, I just find this odd. So Nikki, you know, I don't know what else I can say about you without both of us bursting into tears, which would be a little unseemly, but thank you so much for all of this. Don't go far. I have your phone number. And we all owe you a lot. People all over the city owe you a lot, a lot of whom don't even know you, but they owe you a lot anyway, and so we all want to say thank you.
I just want to say a couple things. I know it's late, and the one thing that I have learned is that we have to feed Ruth. So we're going to feed Ruth very soon. The first time I ever met Ruth is a funny story. I was casually throwing a Coke can into the trash, and she swooped in behind me and said, "Don't you throw that in the trash, this has to be recycled." So from then on, I have been a recycling advocate and have been very pleased to help you with your recycling legislation. And I also want to thank all the members of the city family that I have had the opportunity to work with over the last 15 years. Thousands of people have helped to help us accomplish what we did for the people of Los Angeles, and I just want to thank you all. And then the last thing I want to do, Ruth, is thank you. You have been, okay, here we go. You have been an amazing, amazing boss. I have never had the opportunity to work with someone that I respect and admire so much, and you have helped all of us grow in so many ways, and on behalf of your past staff and your future, future staff probably, and your current staff, I want to thank you for helping us to grow and shine in so many ways, and for letting us work with someone whose character was so deep and strong and true, and for letting us work on issues that we cared so much about, and I just want to thank you so much.
And so for a final word, let me thank all of you for your patience and for the kind things that you have said, and I wish you all the best. You've got a lot of work to do, it's going to be tough, but I hope you find it all as rewarding as I have found it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, forthwith, the mayor's waiting. Forthwith on item four.
Yes, actually, if it hasn't been announced previously, this is the last, not only the last week, but the last day of the fiscal year, so all items approved today, as has been the case all week, will go forthwith.
Oh, he's waiting, that's why.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Robert H. Bartel, please come forward. And your fans that are here to show support for you, you would anticipate that with 50 years of service to the people of the city of Los Angeles, Mr. Bartel would be retiring from the city of Los Angeles. Fifty years of service to the city of Los Angeles, but he's not retiring. We're going to honor and recognize him for his work with the city over all these years, acknowledge him for his service to the people of Los Angeles. So this is not a retirement presentation. Robert H. Bartel, join the city family when there were no child labor laws. Robert H. Bartel, Senior Construction Inspector for the Department of Public Works, Bureau of Contract Administration. Robert has contributed over 50 years of service to the city of Los Angeles. He began his career as field engineer aide for the survey division of the Bureau of Engineering, and thereafter transferred from survey to inspection division in 1956 as a construction inspector for the Bureau of Contract Administration. Robert promoted to senior construction inspector in 1978, and over the years, has worked in the field on major inspection projects and as a dispatcher for the Bureau's San Fernando Valley service area. Robert has been the lead dispatcher in the Bureau's East Valley Office since 1985, where he has efficiently provided a valuable service to inspection personnel, contractors, and the public. Robert has worked on a variety of special projects during his inspection career. Some of the major projects he inspected include the North Central Outfall Sewer, the Winnetka Storm Drain Project, the Platt Ranch Project, as well as various B-permit jobs, including sewer, storm drains, sidewalks, and paving projects. Robert has received several commendations for his excellent work as a project inspector and valley dispatcher. Robert has no plans of retirement. He enjoys his job and finds it very challenging. He continues to love and take pride in the work that he does and will continue to do so until he isn't capable of working anymore. Robert is never going to retire from the city of Los Angeles. Robert is married to his wife, Walter. He has four children and 11 grandchildren. And Robert, we want to recognize and honor you this afternoon for what you have contributed to the city of Los Angeles, and wish you many more years with the city of Los Angeles. Since you started working for the city at the age of 10, and you've been with them for 50 years, that gives some indication of your age, somewhat of an indication, but this is a resolution for you, for all the dedication, all the work that you've done over those 50 years with the city of Los Angeles, and we wish you well for the next 50 years. And we've got some of your colleagues here to recognize you. Charlie has a presentation he wants to make. Charlie Mills?
The last time we gave Bob his city pin, it had more, as many diamonds on it as MacArthur had stars. This year, this time, it has one more, six diamonds for 50 years of service. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Charlie.
And the microphone is yours.
It's been a pleasure and an honor. The 50 years have been very interesting, and I am sure that the years in the future will be just as interesting. The times are changing, and we've got to learn to change with it. Thank you for honoring me this day. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine, for another quick presentation. Chair recognizes Ms. Perry.
This is your three minutes of fame. This is your three minutes of fame. Hope your legs didn't go to sleep. I'm joining Councilmember Parks in honoring a tremendous individual, tremendous woman, the Honorable Janethia Hudley-Hayes, who was elected to serve on the Los Angeles School Board of Education in nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine. She's had an extensive career with the Los Angeles Unified School District, where she served in Child Development Division for five years, as a curriculum specialist for three years, and as a mediator for its Office of Intergroup Relations for two years. She developed workshops for administrators, teachers, and paraprofessionals throughout the district, and helped implement its first through fifth annual Ten Schools Conference. She has been a strong leader in our community, and has developed accelerated curriculum for African-American learners, served as a program director of AHEAD, and served as Executive Vice President of the Martin Luther King Legacy Association. She continues to inspire and empower people, and has served as a national presenter at conferences whose focus is innovative approaches to developing community and parent partnerships with public education agencies. She has conducted parenting workshops and seminars for the Rosa Parks Sexual Assault Crisis Center, United Teachers of Los Angeles, the Pasadena Welfare Rights Organization, the University of California, Los Angeles Unified School District Joint Venture MetCorps Program, and the Southern California Achievement Team Parent Conference. She was selected for the Mayor's Delegation of Los Angeles in celebrating Jerusalem Three Thousand, I guess it was Jerusalem Two Thousand, was appointed to the Los Angeles City Human Relations Commission, elected to the Board of Directors of Public Advocates, and inducted into the Phi Delta Kappa UCLA Chapter. There are so many things that I could say about this tremendous woman, but mainly I want to say that we will miss you.
Thank you.
We will miss your intelligence, your thoughtfulness, and your compassion, and your love for the children that you fought so hard for.
Thank you.
You've made a real and lasting impact on our community, and I know that you will continue to do the great work that you have already done as you move on to your next great venture.
Thank you.
I'd also like to stand with Councilwoman Perry to acknowledge Ms. Hayes. I've had several different relationships in the sense that I believe that when she went on the school board, it was really the start of the revolution of bringing education first. I also believe that since she has been on the board, the credibility of the board was held in such high esteem that we saw, for the first time in many years, bond funds passed to build schools in our community, and most recently, just this past year, having another sizable bond fund passed. I think the curriculum that she has imposed and really moved forward on gives a good platform for continued success of LA Unified School District. But from my prior life, I enjoyed working with her and dealing with the Bridges Program, bringing that program on campus, the LA Best Program. These are things that, as people talked about after-school programs, how we might deal with young people in that, their formative years, at that at-risk stage, how could we prevent them from going through the criminal justice system, or the criminal just, the juvenile justice system? And these are the things that I, I look forward to the school district continuing, but clearly know how and where they got started, and what her hand was in ensuring that the LA Unified School District became responsive. And although we're seeing the end result of a great deal of cooperation in today's light, it was not that way when she came into office. And so I'm just pleased to be here, and she, along with Caprice Young, had made a tremendous impact on the city of Los Angeles and LA Unified School District. And both Jan and I, along with all the city council members, like to give you this certificate.
Actually, what I'd like to say is that it was a great honor for me to serve on the school board, and to make sure that we were providing quality education for all the students in the city of Los Angeles. Democracy depends on a literate citizenry. You cannot have freedom if you do not have a literate citizenry. And the other thing that I feel honored by is to accept this award from city council, because this is what your job is too. You also work to improve the lives of all the citizens in Los Angeles, and so I'm very honored to receive the award, and I was very honored to serve on the school board for four years, so thank you very much.
Mr. Holden?
I want to congratulate and thank Ms. Parks, Mr. Parks, and Ms. Perry, and of course, you, Ms. Hayes, for the recognition that you're receiving today here in the city of Los Angeles. While you were elected to the school board, you've served many of our constituents, especially our precious one, young students from the entire city, and we can't thank you enough for their work. You, how sincere you were, how hard you worked for each and every one of them. There are times we had many problems when they needed more schools, and we had to relocate individuals. You always were there, showing sensitivity to the requests of our seniors and other people who were gonna be displaced. So you had to do two things, your job was doubly hard. One, provide additional schools that were necessary to meet the demand, and two, to make sure that unnecessary hardship was not imposed on individuals who were being replaced. And so, I tell you, I can't thank you enough, you made my job a lot easier, because when I was faced with having to make those decisions, you helped make them for me. And always was a lot of compassion, sincerity, and that's what's required in any individual. Such, thank you.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Janethia. I just wanted to stand here today and also thank you for your four years in what is truly public service, and that is representing the thousands, hundreds of thousands of children on the LA Unified School District Board. And you know, being on the school board is a tough job. It's a very, very tough job. It doesn't pay well, it's long hours, you have a number of, of schools with teachers and principals and administrative issues, you had the whole construction issue of building new schools. Being on the school board is really a tough job, but you really tackled it from day one, and always, in my opinion, put the children first. And you always wanted to make sure that the school district was first and foremost accountable to the kids, and I appreciated that. Another thing I loved about you was, you really made yourself visible in the community. And you know, a lot of people don't always know who's their school board member, or who's on the school board, or what the job is, but you were always visible in the community. And I rode behind you in a couple of parades in the community of Watts, and I really appreciated that, because people need to see a face behind the people who are making decisions that, in my opinion, most impact those families, and that's what happens to their kids. So thank you for your four years of true public service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for our final presentation today, we recognize Mr. Weiss, and Ms. Misakowski, and Ms. Gruel in spirit, and Mr. Reyes in spirit. And in case anybody's wondering why those council members, I believe they represent the Bruin Caucus of the Los Angeles City Council.
Thank, thank you all. We, Councilmember Misakowski and I are with some extraordinarily, amazingly patient role models and champions, and we thank you for your patience. We really, we appreciate your being here, because as UCLA graduates, we like to show off in this chamber, and today, we, we've got great reasons to show off. I'd like to ask all of you to please join me in congratulating representatives from three UCLA's women's national championship teams from softball, gymnastics, and water With us here today, representing the softball team, we have Coach Sue Enquist, Julie Hoshizaki, Kira Gerl, Monique Mejia, and Natasha Watley. From gymnastics, we have Valerie Condos Field, the coach, and from water polo, we have Matt Armato, a men's coach, and Jessica Lopez. We really appreciate all of you sticking it out, because it's important that the city council and the city of LA know exactly what you did. First of all, the women's softball team, this year won its ninth NCAA championship, and that's your tenth national championship. You had a championship before with it through a different organization. As I understand it, you're the second team in history to lose your opening game and come back and win the championship, and it's an extraordinary achievement. You finished the season with a record of fifty-four and seven. Junior pitcher Kira Gerl did an extraordinary job, you pitched a nine-inning no-hitter, is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
First time in the history of the sport, in the championship game, that is extraordinary. And seniors Taria Mims and Natasha Watley were named to the All-Tournament Team, and Kira, you're named the Most Outstanding Player in the tournament? Congratulations, that's, that's extraordinary. Now, the top-ranked women's gymnastics team won its fourth overall NCAA championship, and the head coach, Valerie Condos Field, has really positioned her squad as the premier gymnastics team in collegiate gymnastics. That's also an extraordinary achievement. There have been numerous individual titles, including those won by freshman Kate Richardson, her teammate Jamie Dantcher, and, and some other extraordinary players or participants. Senior Ani Willis was chosen as the 2003 Honda Sports Award winner, as the nation's top female collegiate gymnast this year. I mean, it's just extraordinary, and the list goes on and on from that team. Finally, the women's water polo team won its second NCAA championship, and its sixth national championship, after beating Stanford this year. And you guys, you guys had an extraordinarily, extraordinary run. Your record this year was twenty-three and four. Seniors Robin Beauregard and Junior Natalie Golda were named to the National First Team, and a total of six members of your team received All-American honors. It is one of the most extraordinary parts of my job, that I have the chance to represent the district that includes UCLA. Cindy's a graduate of there, we're so very proud. Cindy, you want to tell them a few words of it?
I'm really pleased to be joining Jack here, and having been an alum of UCLA back in the John Wooden era, I can go back that far. It truly is great and amazing to see the women's teams now equal the men's teams at UCLA in all areas. I don't know where or when, they're gonna be building a new building to add all these trophies, all these banners, but I hope they are hanging just as proudly in Pauli Pavilion, because you deserve that ranking, those, I mean, it just went on and on, and number one, first time ever, top awards. It's truly amazing, and to know that this institution does it again and again, not only in the field of competitive sports, women and men, but also in the field of academics. It really is an incredible institution that this city is proud of, we are proud of you. And although the institution is in Mr. Weiss's district, I dare say, I think I've got the largest population of UCLA residents, both current students and alum, in the eleventh council district. So, it's a, it's great to share this tribute with him, and I don't know if any of the coaches or victors here want to speak.
They do, but so do Ms. Galanter and Mr. Labach.
I, I just wanted to say congratulations also, and I also want to thank you for your patience. You had the longest wait that, a much longer wait than most people do, and I appreciate your sitting through it. Thank you.
On behalf of all the coaches, I'd just like to say how honored we are to be here. Thank you for your, for honoring us in this way. We are thrilled to be ambassadors for Los Angeles. We are, we represent the community, we are, we all have diverse teams, and you could not ask for better ambassadors than UCLA Bruins. And Ruth, it was a privilege to be here today, to learn so much about the work that you've done, and if you can flip, swim, or throw a ball, we'd love to have you on any of our teams. Thank you.
Mr. Labach.
Thank you. I think Ruth, she could be a great coach, coach, she could be a great coach as a teacher, that's what I saw there. But I want to congratulate all the coaches and athletes in all of UCLA. I returned to New York City for the first time in twenty-five years at a conference on public parks, and one of the things we talked about just this week is how you had to reconnect the athletes to the public parks, to the playgrounds that they were on. So I congratulate you being champions, and it's great to see champions, and my mentor was a Bruin, Milt Davis, who went to Jefferson High School here in Los Angeles, and Los Angeles City College, and then to UCLA, played for Red Sanders. But I always like to mention my mentor, but, but as you are mentors now, as athletes who are champions, to go back to your public playgrounds and your parks where you first started, call your high school coach again, and make that connection, because it's so important, if we're gonna reach out to the engagement that is necessary for young people, that we continue on that activity of athletics, and academics, and humanities. Congratulations to the UCLA Bruin family for your great work.
Thank you, Mr. Labach. Just, I just want to add two things, and then we do want to hear from the players and the coaches. One is, Mr. Weiss, I know you're proud UCLA's in your district, and we talked about women in sports reaching equity with men in sports, but raise your hand if you saw that championship softball game and that no-hitter on Fox Sports West. I sure did. Now, I'm proud of that. And also, another way you inspire children, especially young girls, in a way that you don't know. There is a little league in my district called the Silmar Independent Baseball League, and they have baseball for the boys and softball for the girls. The boys' teams are certainly named after the professional sports teams, there's the Dodgers, and the Yankees, and the Angels. The girls' teams, the coaches got together and named each and every one of the teams after college teams, to send the message that there are women to look up to in terms of the sport, but also to emphasize the academic side of life. So, and know that there's little girls out there looking up to each and every one of you, and you're doing a tremendous job in setting the example.
Thank you. On behalf of the UCLA softball program, I want to thank the city council and the city of Los Angeles for the recognition today. I think what we're most proud of at UCLA is the balance that we try to maintain, and to send a message to everybody that if you have hard work and you have a positive attitude, both in the academic and the athletic realm, you can attain your goals. But I think what I'm most excited about in our sport of softball is that we represent, I believe, the tapestry of Los Angeles, in all different backgrounds, all different colors. The game of softball welcomes all of those that are capable of making the sacrifice and working hard. And the softball program continues to reach out through RBI, rebuilding baseball and softball in the inner city, along with LA City Park and Rep, to make sure that we become strong role models for the young women and the young boys out there shooting for their goals. Because the bottom line is, you've got to go and be someplace where you've seen somebody else go out and be successful, and that's our commitment to the city of Los Angeles, to continue to be a partner in this quest, to make sure that everybody's goals become a reality. Our trophy sits at UCLA, but I believe it's LA's trophy as well, and we are LA's team. Thank you for having us.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. I just wanted to rise and say, first of all, thank you for the patience that you've shown by sitting through this council meeting until we got to you. I saw it on my, my calendar this morning, that you were gonna be here, and that we were gonna have the opportunity to honor you, and I was so excited. And I want you to know that you're right, your championship, your trophy, is, is everyone, but it's particularly for all the girls, for all the girls out there who feel like they too have the same kinds of dreams, and have the same kinds of goals, and it gives them hope that they can achieve that in their own life. And you'll be pleased to know that this city council unanimously, a couple weeks ago, sent a resolution to President Bush, making sure that we were on record saying we did not believe Title IX in any way should be changed, because what Title IX does is just what you said. It, it provides an opportunity for women to reach their dreams and their goals, and we don't think this is the right time to change that. So, girls rule. And a few good guys.
I'd like to, oops, excuse me. I'd like to thank the council on behalf of the women's water polo team. Head coach Adam Cucorian had a prior engagement, he was not able to make it here today, but on behalf of the program, we're here to present Councilman Weiss with the trophy, designating the championship season this year. It has every- Season this year, it has every member of the team's name on the back of it. So there's that for you. And on the note of the Title IX issues, it is important that women are recognized for athletic accomplishments, and I don't think that it happens very often. And in this city, I think this is one city across the country that does a very good job of that. And I'd like to thank the council for recognizing those accomplishments and the sacrifice that it takes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. That's great. Yeah, Tom's going to tell you a story. Watch it.
I just want to say something. I know we were talking about Ruth earlier, but years ago, the best pitcher in City Hall, the City Hall baseball team, Sidney Misakowski, right there.
Yeah. I love that you're all back there.
Thank you very much, and this concludes the presentation segment of today's agenda. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number six was called special. City Commerce, Energy, and National Resources Committee report has been submitted, and it's submitting without recommendation, two recommendations, DWP Board and CAO.
Okay. Ms. Galanter, on item number six.
Thank you. This item, this is my swan song, guys. This item comes before you without a recommendation. There were only two of us present at the committee, and we disagreed over really the only issue there's a disagreement over, which is exactly where this fuel cell should be located. I think it would help the council in making a decision if I could ask Mr. Deaton and/or the Department of Water and Power to just say a word or two. Let me just tell you that the issue essentially is whether the AQMD would like us to put this fuel cell at the airport in order to demonstrate to the community that we are attempting to clean the air at the airport. Now, cleaning the air at the airport is a wonderful idea, but this power plant is not going to send power directly to the airport. It's going to send it into the grid, which it could do from any place in the city. And so Ms. Han was, I think, anxious to follow through on the commitment made to the community. I don't want to misrepresent you here. I was a little concerned because I think that the community, it's essentially a fraud to tell them that this plant is going to clean up the air at the airport. It's going to do its part like every other power plant that we're dealing with. But it's not going to go directly to the airport. The only difference that I can see is that by putting it there, we get to pay rent to the airline for the use of their space, whereas if we put it somewhere else, we wouldn't have to pay rent. And my parting mantra to you all is everything that comes along, you should ask where the money's going to come from, because even at Water and Power, they're beginning to run out. So, Mr. Deaton, why don't you perhaps explain to the council what's exactly before us, and maybe we can get the show on the road?
Some time ago, there was an arrangement made with the AQMD relative to a $14 million payment, in which this was a portion of that in lieu of some problems relative to a perceived problem with NOx. Not to get into that particular detail, but there was included in this a commitment to do, amongst other things, a fuel cell at the airport at the time at the TWA facility. Since the meeting of the committee, and I believe that Councilwoman Han, based in large part her position based on a representation by the city attorney relative to this was a fulfillment of the commitment that we had made under an illegal document. The city attorney has gone back, and some of the facts have changed. And one of the facts is that the amount of money that we've expended has exceeded. At the time, the city attorney felt as though we had not expended $14 million and in fact had spent some $2 million less than that. After doing an auditing of the situation, it has been determined that we've actually spent over $18 million or $4 million more than required under the agreement. This may or may not allow us not to proceed with this, but we have some policy issues relative to lack of competitive bid in the first place. Second, that this was to be a prototype of promoting these fuel cells at other locations. We do not believe that, given the subsidy and the rate decrease that has been suggested for the airline, that we can sustain that for other installations. Also, given the location of this, we question the environmental benefit. And finally, we don't believe that the benefit, if there is a benefit, should go to a private agency before we explore thoroughly the public agency. Hence, our recommendation has been to reject the Department of Water and Power's proposal and to suggest that we locate one at the zoo. I'd like to modify that as follows and not say the zoo. Just say that we would like, I believe strongly that the council should reject this today, send it back to the Department of Water and Power. Department of Water and Power, subsequent to the committee meeting, is actually asked, and management is called and asked, that we in fact do that. The council actually reject it, send it back to the Department of Water and Power, take the zoo off the table for the time being, try to look for another location that kind of satisfies from a public policy standpoint where it might be located. Can we resolve the environmental issues and the financial issues? And I think that would be the wise course of action for today, and I so recommend.
Okay, thank you. Am I back on here? Well, in keeping with the pattern you all described about me earlier on, boy, that was a lesson, I'd like to get to the bottom line here and move that we reject the item as it's presented to us, which will then send it back to the board. Or do we need to specifically send it back?
That's what will happen.
That's what will happen, just by rejecting it, so that the board will have a chance to, in light of the audit and other things, to come up with
Some other solution.
Its own solution. And that will then, of course, come back to the council for the council's approval. So I move that we reject the agreement that was presented to us. Thank you.
Ms. Misakowski.
I'm happy to second that. I also would like to add and to specify that the recommendation is satisfactory, but that we do ask DWP to meet with AQMD, not only internally with what our audit may be, but members, as we did have a rather lengthy session, we had discussion in the back between DWP and AQMD, and I understand that was the first time they may have been talking face-to-face. Obviously, they ought to do that some more and bring back other proposals with clarity. I think that there may be other locations that could be chosen in and around the airports as that area still benefits from this. But let's make sure that we, the DWP has the guidelines that Mr. Deaton's report outlines, and that we look at the best of all proposals within, consistent with all the other policies that the city normally practices. So I believe that that will resolve this and ask for an eye vote on that motion.
Councilmember Han.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I just wanted to, and I think Ms. Galanter represented my position pretty accurately. And I think, members, my concern was always, and the information that we got in committee was very clearly that placing this fuel cell at the airport was part of the settlement agreement. And when I point-blank asked a city attorney who was at the committee, if we tweaked this part of it, if we took that part out, would that unravel the settlement? And we were told yes. So when I was in committee, I voted to support it because I felt like it got us to where we want to get as a city. I mean, it was part of the settlement. We were doing the right thing, and the fact that it was at a very visible facility like the airport, and even giving incentive to a private company to use clean air is not a bad thing. And I think that's sometimes where we will go as a city, because we want to keep encouraging users to use clean energy. So that's where I came from out of the committee. We have new information now. I think, members, we should be aware that even at this point, it is tenuous, and there still could be an issue that we are not living up to our settlement. It's not as clear as we think it would be, but Ms. Misakowski, I really do support what you're saying, is that let's sit back down at the table with AQMD. Let's make sure that they understand that the spirit of what we're trying to do is clearly to still meet the requirements of the settlement and move forward with placing a fuel cell somewhere. I would like to, if we're not going to do it at the airport, I know the zoo's been considered, I would like to consider the Port of Los Angeles, the harbor. We have clean air issues down there. And again, something that visible, particularly when we're beginning to initiate cold ironing, I think having a clean fuel cell placed somewhere like that, again, is not only, you know, in reality, it's actually providing clean air, it's a symbol. And I think that's not a bad thing to make something visible on what we believe, what's our commitment. So that's where I was coming from when I came out of committee. You know, I'm still a little worried that what we're doing today may be taken as trying to get out of part of our settlement. So, and I hope that's not the case. We haven't heard from the city attorney yet.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, we have Ms. Galanter's motion before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number seven was adopted earlier. However, there are cards from the public, and a public hearing was not held in committee, so this should be reconsidered for a public hearing.
Okay. Without objection, item seven shall be reconsidered and back before us. We do have a few speaker cards on item number seven. Mr. Holden?
Respectfully request that we move to the next item, then hold item seven on the table came from our committee.
Okay. Is there any objection? Then let's proceed to the next item. We'll hold item seven on the desk.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 45 was called special for cards, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed to the council members.
Okay. Members wishing to speak on this item? Let me see some people press their buttons, beginning with Ms. Perry.
Much, Mr. President. I guess all the members have a copy of the motion that I introduced today with a number of my colleagues signing on as well. And this goes to the issue of the renaming of the Boulevard. What I would like to see happen, the focus of this motion, is to continue the discussion on renaming the Boulevard as Tom Bradley Boulevard and to bring the matter back into public works, because I felt that it was extremely important through the committee process, one, to allow public participation, and to also talk about the implementation strategy of the name change from the perspective of the Department of Engineering, from the perspective of the stakeholders on the Boulevard, from the perspective of the business owners and operators on the Boulevard. I know that the city, this city has visited this issue on a number of occasions. The most recent and most high-profile one was, I believe, Cesar Chavez being changed from Brooklyn to Cesar Chavez. And if I recall correctly, there was a process on that particular name change that allowed the businesses and stakeholders along that major artery the chance to comment, participate, and to be educated, and it provided the city with an opportunity to do better and effective outreach. So by the time the name change came through, it was viewed very positively in that it was an uplifting experience and generally not considered to be a negative experience. And so that is the intent of 45A before you today. And I believe other of the members would like to comment as well.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I rise in support of Ms. Perry's motion, and I have felt this way all along since this has been discussed. And clearly, no one can dispute the legacy of the great Tom Bradley. And I think what this motion is allowing us to say today publicly is that this city council is committed to naming a major street for Mayor Tom Bradley, but allowing for the full process to take place. And I think that's important, and it's very consistent with what I always argue on the city council, is that we do have neighborhood councils, we do have community groups, we do have business groups that deserve to weigh in on the decisions that we make down here at City Hall that will really impact their daily lives and their daily business. And I think this is no less the type of thing that we should certainly allow for plenty of time to have a public hearing, plenty of time to have people weigh in on it. There's no reason to rush this. If this is a good idea today, it will be a good idea a month from now or six months And ultimately, no matter what the opposition may be to anything we do on the city council, I hope that we, as a council, never have an opposition to our actions be solely that we did not listen to the people that it affected. And I hope that, again, people may disagree with us, people may be opposed to what we do, but I hope we never have the argument used against anything we do, that we did not listen to the people, that we did not give plenty of time for people to weigh in on it. The only thing This motion, to me, says that, again, we are committed to naming a major street for Tom Bradley, but we want to have the full public hearing. I just want to make sure that those who are in favor of Crenshaw Boulevard being renamed for Tom Bradley, that we have, and I don't know if it's a friendly amendment to this motion, but when we talk about for further public hearing and input from business, residential, and community groups and individuals, we have some language that says to discuss the possibility of naming a major street, including Crenshaw Boulevard, so that we make sure that we're not throwing it out. We're still considering it, but it's going to go through the process. I just want to make sure that this motion is clear about that.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Although I second this motion, and after talking to Mrs. Bradley, contrary to my better judgment, I'm going to support that we send it to committee, that we do have the We're going to support that it goes to committee. I think that this has been an issue that has gone way too long for somebody that has been so valuable to the city of LA. I do think that the issues that will come to committee will be no different than we heard over the last few days. His career will not be more stellar when we hear it in committee. The price of funding changes in our stationery will not be any less. People who believe that Crenshaw only runs between Adams and Manchester will still believe that. And I think the issue is, we'll hear that, and we'll have the same stories that we heard in Santa Barbara versus Martin Luther King Boulevard. But I think it's something in which I believe there's not the vote or the sentiment to vote on this today, and so I think we can go forward, go into committee, hear these same arguments we heard, and hope we come up with a proper solution. And the real issue that I'm supportive of Crenshaw Boulevard is that everything that we've been identified in this council does not represent where Mayor Bradley served as a city councilperson. People want to bring it to Spring Street. They want to go to the airport. They want to go to the City Hall. Mayor Bradley served as a councilperson that represented most of Crenshaw as we know it with the boundary changes. His home still resides within five blocks of Crenshaw. And so I will support that, even though I second the original motion, because I believe that the Bradley family has been taken through enough torture at this time.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I see what we do here today. And what we do here today doesn't change or show me anything that's essentially positive of what we've done in the past or what we're doing today. What we're doing today is trying to find a way not to do what we really ought to do. And in this particular case, any excuse is not accepted, in my view. Any delay is not accepted, in my view. But as an elected official, I know that you don't win all the battles you fight, and you don't fight all the battles you win. But the fact of the matter is that, in my view, it's a loss for the community. The wrong message is being sent out there. Just today, we had a colleague on the floor stand up and say what he intends to do for another colleague, and they got a standing ovation, even though the neighborhood council was not here echoing that. But they tend to do what they have to choose to do when it comes to their own community. We all knew, and we loved, and we appreciated Chick Hearn.
We all knew, and we loved, and we appreciated Chick Hearn's. In fact, I wear a Laker ring. But it only took three weeks to change the name of the street. You see? And we have a nice building that's named for. My former colleague, whom I love, John Ferrara, it took one week to change that. We have a former mayor whom we got to know for a short period of time, not fifty-two years like Tom Bradley. It took one week to change the central library, the largest library in the city of Los Angeles, to Richard Reardon. Just a short period of time. And what I'm really... And the neighborhood councils, he created that in his charter reform, but they did it. And what I'm really saying is that the members in this horseshoe, when they speak for the majority, do what they want to do, when they want to do it, for the representatives of the majority. I know my colleague, and I'm not going to use the name. We have very important buildings named, Moss Courthouse. And I loved that guy, was greatest fair in the Supreme Court. In other buildings, there were names. There was no debate, there was no dispute, nobody talked about process. They just did it. And since they have the votes, they do anything they want to do, I suppose. And before I close, Mr. President, just give me another minute. There was a time ten years ago or so, we talked about reapportionment. And I said, "Do not remove that seat into the valley and deny representation from the valley, and give two board seats in the valley on the Board of Education." They said, "They did that." They only gave one seat to the valley, divided the seat between the inner city and tunnel sun into hunger, and then all heck broke loose. They said, "We only have one seat out here, we're forty percent of the population, why not two at least?" And then they started talking about separating the school district and dividing the city. And I said, "Well, why would you do that?" They said, "Because we had the votes to do it." I voted against it, because it's a wrong thing to do. And yet, today, they have the votes to do what they want to do, and that vote is to deny and to delay. There was a motion put in shortly after the passing of the mayor, that we rename the airport, long before the Reagan Airport was ever thought of in Washington. But what we have in place today, the Reagan Airport, Tom Bradley Airport is not there, even though you have the International. It was sent to committee, still in committee, and I authored the motion. And all I'm really saying is that not much has changed. We do what we want to do when we have the votes to do it. Yes, when you have this hearing, and I'm glad you included the fact that we should consider at least Crenshaw Boulevard...
Mr. Holden.
And you'll see what the support will be emanating from the community. What you've heard is a minority voice, when the majority of the people of this city speak out the ones that loved him, the ones that he represented so well, the ones that he cared about. And I know all the time, and I won't speak again. When they're heard from, then you'll say, "Ah, Mr. Zine, the people are not speaking, therefore, I'm going to listen." And you will listen, hopefully, you've given your word, because that's the message you're going to hear. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
I'm gone.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. At this late hour, the debate continues. I was part of the Charter Reform Commission with my colleagues Janice Hahn and Nick Pacheco, and we told the committee of Los Angeles, we want to listen to them, we want their input. We have a committee that listens, we have neighborhood councils that listen. And this is a different council. This council wants to hear input from the communities of Los Angeles, no matter where I know what Tom Bradley did in his law enforcement career, I know what Tom Bradley did as a city council member and as a mayor of this city for twenty years. Tom Bradley went from law enforcement into politics, and I'm the second person, and Councilmember Parks is the third person, to have the honor and the privilege to go from the LAPD into politics in the city of Los Angeles. So I feel honored to follow in Tom Bradley's footsteps. And there should be a street named after Tom Bradley. It's appropriate that we do that. But the process, and I know how my colleague, councilmember Holden, fights, and he's relentless in his fights, and how he's passionate about a subject, about a matter, about an issue. But this particular subject has really opened my eyes, and I worked South Los Angeles, I worked Seventy-seventh, I've worked Southeast, Southwest, I've worked those divisions. And I know how much good is down there, and how those people oftentimes feel disconnected. They feel disconnected from the city of Los Angeles. We need to send a message that we listen to them, that we hear their cries, we hear their pleas, we know that we can make it a better city for South Los Angeles, West Los Angeles, the San Fernando Valley, East Los Angeles. And it's with that consideration that I believe we're going to make the right choice in a deliberative manner, with all of the input from the people of the city of Los Angeles, that will say, "Yes, we have a street, we want to name Tom Bradley," without controversy. I've heard other buildings that have been named, there wasn't controversy. This has become very controversial. And all the emails I've received, all the faxes I've received, have been, "Don't do it at this particular location, we want to be heard." So I'm going to support the amending motion. I'm going to support the amending motion, that we will name a street, we will have the hearings to figure out where, we'll figure out when, we'll take that amendment and make that happen. So it will happen, but it won't happen today. Thank you.
Mr. President, colleagues, I just wanted to tell everyone that I was very supportive of this effort, because, as you know, back in eighteen forty-nine, as I was informed recently in email, Spring Street was calle Primavera. So I figure if a name changing started back then for different various reasons, then I figured that these individuals who were promoting this name change had not broken from a very rampant tradition here in the city of Los Angeles. So I just want to put that on the record, that we have a strong tradition in this city of supporting our community leaders, civic leaders, and obviously, Mayor Tom Bradley is one of the great ones here in Los Angeles.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members, and to those who are here today. I support Jan Perry's motion, and I truly believe it's very important. With anything we do, we get community input, because then it grows. And just like those who are in the fields planting today, they make sure they get deep into the soil. And when they get into the soil, they make sure the roots grow deep. And there's no question that Tom Bradley's roots in this city, and the impact that he has had on this city, is tremendous. So if we are about to do this, to honor him again, and it's important to honor him again, which I support, as a member of his youth council, as someone who remembers one of his opening statements, how he opened up City Hall for all the people to come in, and remember the youth council when I was a youth, it's very important that we get the right street, whatever that may be, okay? And also, members, and Mr. Deaton, I direct this to you, I truly believe this city needs a historian who really knows it, because I made an absolute mistake in committee when I spoke that Crenshaw was named after the melons. The Crenshaw Melons, because I also represent... Now, I made a mistake, I'm saying it. Pointcetta is a street in my district, named for the flowers. All the pointcettas you see in the holiday time now are made in Carlsbad, but I made a mistake, and I felt bad. Now, Greg Fisher's a great deputy for the Ninth District, he'd be a great historian, because I think it's important to make sure we do the right thing to recognize what is there to carry it on. If you look, and I did just get back from New York City, and I went through Columbus Circle, and I went by Herald Square, and I went through all the names, and I rode the subway, and I thought about the Tom Bradley Station that's right here in the Civic Center, and I thought about the Tom Bradley Terminal at Los Angeles International Airport. I thought about this vote, Mr. Holden. But, Mr. Holden, I think we have to, always, to make it grow right, is make sure you get to the people, and I think that's what Tom Bradley would want if he was here. Now, I will say something else, members. Behind this, I believe, and is truly important, is that we ask the school district that one of the six new high schools in Los Angeles be named after Tom Bradley, okay? Now, the reason why is because you want to make sure young people have a connection to who Tom Bradley was and what he did with his school, just like others who've come here and are named after it. Because I think it's real important that we understand the history of this city and who's been here, all the way back, as you said, Nick, from the times when it was a Spanish-speaking pueblo. So, Ms. Perry, I thank you for your leadership in trying to do this. I thank everybody for being involved here, but also, whatever side one was on here, the important thing is we've had this discussion about someone who has impacted all our lives in this generation of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
So what's important, Mr. President, that we make sure in this discussion, that more people know about Tom Bradley and what he meant to this city, and what he will mean to young people as they grow up and learn all the issues that they must live with in their communities. I thank you, and I thank you again.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I wanted to rise to make a clarification, and, Mr. Zine, I respect you, you're my colleague, but I did not do this motion so that we could have an additional conversation about whether or not we should just change the whole focus away from the community from whence Mr. Bradley came, and then bring it downtown and focus on Spring Street. We have to remember the history of El Pueblo de Los Angeles and Spring Street, which was called Primavera, and we have to respect the history of all of our communities. The purpose of this motion was to provide an opportunity, a venue, for people to speak and to receive guidance, and for the city to respond to the community and give instruction, guidance, education, and outreach, and to respect the history of the Crenshaw community and the community from which Mr. Bradley came from. So that was the purpose of it, and I want to make sure that people are clear about that, because I know people have been receiving phone calls this morning on the council floor about, "Let's just change it to Spring Street now." And I recall that Attorney Lomax went to great efforts in making sure that First Street, starting at Disney Hall, all the way down to City Hall already, and the signs are up already, to name that as Tom Bradley Boulevard. And I believe that took place prior to 2001, correct me if I'm wrong. So I'm not sure why this issue is being taken in another direction, but again, for clarification, the purpose of my motion is to allow, to provide a venue which people can comment, have input, and the city can respond accordingly, so we can make this a positive experience in a positive way to remember this great man.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. Pacheco, you mentioned something happened in eighteen forty-eight. Will you repeat that, please, for the record? I want to hear, because I... Yeah, about changing a name of...
No, no, all I said was in eighteen forty-nine, the first, one of the first streets in the city of Los Angeles, calle Primavera, which I was so informed through my great email system here. That's all. I didn't say it was changed, I said that's when it was first put on, the first identified map.
Right. Today, I'm about to make my, I'm going to make my last comments as a member of the city council. But I want to say this, that to delay is to deny, and you can be assured of that. One thing, I'm going to miss serving in this council and trying to make sure things were done for the people. And when they weren't, I would stand up and I would say so, and focus on the issues, and try to make things happen for the good of the community and all. And I would hear a lot of rhetoric from time to time from my colleagues. And what I knew they was doing was mudding the water, they were being, insincerity. If there was a commitment, you would have heard it from everybody. Ms. Perry had to stand up and clarify what even her motion is today, because once it began to go to committee and you start discussing it, somebody's going to say, "Did I say that? Did I mean that?" And you're going to be looking around to see whether or not you can find eight or ten votes. And what's going to happen then is what's happening today. Rhetoric, rhetoric, and more rhetoric, because there's no commitment, and there's no sincerity in the hearts and minds of them all. And what you're going to have, more delay, and as you delay, you're going to deny. And so, I guess I came in here making a statement, and I'm going to go out saying exactly how I feel, and that's how I feel. To delay, well, this action today is tantamount to denying it, because trying to get eight votes from these individuals, in my view, I would be glad to be wrong, but at any time future, I would say not likely.
Other members wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, we have Ms. Perry's motion before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. So just by request of Mr. Labange, and for the public's understanding, what has just happened is, the city council has voted to approve, in concept, the naming of a major street in the city of Los Angeles after former Mayor Tom Bradley. The actual selection of the street and implementation will be handled in committee in the very near future. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The next item, Mr. President, item number forty-six, called special, inasmuch as there are cards from the public.
Item forty-six. Now before us, we do have just one speaker card on item forty-six, Mr. Jim McQuiston. Go ahead, Jim.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I did turn in the card on eighteen, and I did want to say briefly that Westwood is in Northern California, between Susanville and Chester, and Westwood Village is in Southern California. And when you say a Westwood by itself, you have Westwood North Village. It should be either Westwood Village North or Northwestwood Village to distinguish the two. On item forty-six, I want to say that I certainly approve the passing of this ordinance, if I only knew what was in the ordinance, because I've tried for several days now to get a copy, and the clerk says that there are no copies available of the ordinance. I hope the city clerk, or the city attorney, has presented that ordinance, so that we can all see what it is before it's passed.
We'll help you out with that, Jim. This concludes public comment on this item. Members wishing to be heard on item forty-six? Mr. Garcetti.
Briefly, Mr. McQuiston, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Can the city clerk or city attorney assure us that members of the public can get a copy of this ordinance? Okay. Mr. McQuiston, we will make sure to get you a copy. As a member of the public, you have every right to see that. Thank you.
Jim.
And so it is delivered. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number six is still on the desk, Mr. President.
I believe it's item number seven that has been held on the desk as we needed to reopen, revisit the item, reopen the public hearing. The council calls forward Elaine Towns, Granville Beals, Warren Williams, and David McNeil. If you're all here for item number seven, this is your opportunity to address the council. Elaine Towns, Granville Beals, Warren Williams, and David McNeil. And if those individuals are no longer here, we will add their cards as part of the record, three of the four against the proposal, one for the proposal. And once again, members of the council, item seven is before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there are two items remaining from the special meeting...
Let us then temporarily recess the regular meeting agenda and return to the special meeting. First item, please.
Item number four was called special, and both last... Item number four was called special, and both actually were called special for cards from the public.
Okay, I, let's take item number five from the special agenda first.
And there are two reports on that. They both concur, the EDE report has an additional recommendation, so if council wishes, it may adopt both of those reports.
Okay, the majority of the cards submitted previously on item number five of the special meeting agenda have since been withdrawn with one exception. Mr. Tutte Hayes, please come forward at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Councilman LeBange and Councilman Garcetti will be very pleased with this because they have been, had the foresight to recognize that we do not revel in our glories. Our glories are in our communities. And they were the first to step forward with the notion of having cultural tourism in our various communities. I am pleased to indicate to you that in our community, on Crenshaw, near King, is the Orangey Black Arts Museum, 17,000 square feet, a phenomenal collection of art and museum pieces you've ever laid your eyes on. It is a hidden glory, believe me. I am currently requesting that the Cultural Affairs Committee, together with our museum, have a tour through that, through the Orangey Black Arts Museum. It's a two-story building, and of course, you might know it's in the Malton Square redevelopment project, which is really another excellent situation, because that provides the opportunity to develop this museum as a tourist attraction. We can design it so that the buses can come, the children can come, and people can recognize that in what we used to call the black community, there is a cultural affair tourist opportunity. So that's really all I had to say about Malton Square. I've discussed this very limitly with Mr. Hamon about it. He begins to recognize, I hope, some of the useful ideas that this museum might portray. So I will approach your office, Mr. Garcetti and Ms. LeBange, and we'll give you further developments together with a video to show you what's actually happening there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Are there members of the council wishing to be heard on item five of the special agenda? I am seeing one member of the public who wishes to come, please come forward and introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you very much. I neglected to put SP in front of five, and I signed to speak on item five, I'm in SP5. My name is Warren Williams, and I'm with the Coalition for Blacks Best Interests. And having talked to the developer and others on this item, I signed in opposition, I just want to place it as other. And my concern is a human issue related here. Chesterfield Square is an example of development that was done that brings a lot of white business into the community. When a primary development is made like that, a business, then the residents, who's the consumers, end up gravitating towards the big businesses, which means that the small businesses end up closing up, and often, they're not even represented, don't have the opportunity to pay the high rent and cost to become a tenant inside those new developments. I would hope that the planning of this development would include a process whereby we can look at the long term of the benefit of helping small black businesses as well. And I hope that when we look at the housing, that will include things like more recreational things and more green space, which is needed within these communities as well. So the human issue, what we really want to bring attention on light to. I also would submit a proposal to the developer and to this council in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This once again concludes public comment on item number five of the special meeting agenda. Are there members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. And before we close the roll, okay, I'm sorry, ma'am, if anybody who is here to speak on item five of the special meeting agenda, please come forward and form a line behind the podium. And I'll apologize if some of your speaker cards were misplaced. Ma'am, before you speak, are there any other members of the public here to speak on this item? Going once, going twice. Go ahead, ma'am, and you will be the final speaker.
Okay. My name is Valerie Stewart, and I'm with the Ebony Showcase Theater and Cultural Arts Center, which has been relocated to the Internet because of the CRA and what they did to my father, Nick Stewart, who died one week after the groundbreaking of the Nate Holden Theater. I have some very personal issues about the issue of redevelopment, but I'm not going to make this personal, I'm going to talk about facts. The grand jury report said that redevelopment is one of the most abused tools available to governments, and my concern is for the people. I am in contact with people from all over the United States who have been redeveloped in various cities across the country. They feel that redevelopment is stealing. I wanted to tell people that I'm not opposed to fixing up a neighborhood or beautifying a neighborhood, but what I am opposed to is the kind of thing that was done to us in the name of fixing up the neighborhood and redeveloping it. And what people don't know is that my father was named in an eminent domain lawsuit by the CRA, and Nate Holden is now named the theater, the Nate Holden Theater, after sending my dad a letter in 1993 saying that he was going to take my dad's legacy to a new level. This is kind of trivia, but what I want to say is...
May I ask you to conclude, ma'am, please?
No, 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 one minute. I want to say this, that as part of the redevelopment process, and you need to try to talk to me about it, at the time that the theater was redeveloped and at the time that they sued us, there was money available to the public, for public, for people in the community to get loans, but instead Nate Holden and the CRA formed a nonprofit organization called Ebony Showcase Cultural Center, which diverted money from community businesses. My concern is that money is going to go to one entity, one group, and that small businesses are going to be left out of the picture, that people are going to be relocated and moved out. And I don't like seeing dummy corporations formed, I don't like seeing paperwork altered, laws misquoted, all of the things that happen to us. I don't want to see this happen to other individuals who own property. My concern is for the citizens. I do want the area cleaned up, I do want the businesses included. I don't agree with the process and the way that it works. It's stealing.
Thank you, ma'am. This concludes public comment on this item. And third time's a charm. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number four from the special meeting was also called special.
Okay, and we do have a couple of cards submitted for item number four. They're not labeled special four, they're labeled item number four, so I read a couple of names. If you hear on item four of the special meeting agenda, this is your opportunity to be heard. Big Money Griff and Warren Williams. Mr. Griff and Mr. Williams. This is an item related to franchise fee audits in the city of Los Angeles. If neither of those individuals are here, then we will close public comment on this item and recognize members wishing to be heard. Item number four of the special meeting agenda, seeing no requests. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is an ordinance. Thank you for the 12 votes in the room. And this concludes the special meeting agenda. Let us now adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting agenda. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there are several specials to be adopted, not on the agenda. Special one is a motion by Councilmember Zine and seconded by Councilmember Pacheco, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. President, members, Councilman Zine's motion presented requires that the council make a determination under the provisions of the government code and the rules of the city council, that there is, there is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and that the matter came to the attention of the city council subsequent to the posting of today's city council agenda. And I believe Councilman Zine can speak to the actual facts of this motion.
Mr. Zine on the findings.
Mr. President, colleagues, this matter involves a case that's going to go before the U.S. Supreme Court, and it involves a detective with the police department who's retired, and it's critical that we have that detective brought back to help the city attorney defend the city in this case, and urgency is necessary because of the process through the court, which could affect the U.S. constitutional law, the U.S. constitutional law, and raise significant legal issues and liability for the city of Los Angeles. So it's with that urgency that we bring special one forward.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Members wishing to be heard on the findings of special one? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Special one now before us, members wishing to be heard on the motion itself? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on special one? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved, and along with other items being approved today, we'll send that matter forthwith. Next item, please.
Special two is a motion presented by Councilmember Weiss, seconded by Councilmember Parks, and the city attorney will speak to the finding.
Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. President, members, similarly, this motion by Councilman Weiss requires that the council make a determination that there is a need to take immediate action on the matter, and that the need to take this action was brought to the attention of the council subsequent to the posting of today's city council agenda.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? On the findings, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Special two now before us. On the item itself, are there members wishing to be heard? This is special two, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Forthwith, next item.
And there is a special three before you, and also an amending motion to special three, and the original motion is presented by Pacheco, seconded by Perry. The amending motion is presented by Councilmember Garcetti, seconded by Han.
Okay, let's proceed with the findings first. Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. President, members, Councilman Pacheco's motion requires that the council make a determination that there is a need to take immediate action on the matter, and that the need to take action came to the council's agenda, to council's attention, subsequent to the posting of today's city council agenda.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings, Mr. Pacheco? On the findings, other members, on the findings, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Special three now before us, and there has also been an amending motion introduced on this item that has been circulated. Mr. Pacheco, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. President, colleagues, it's come to our attention, unfortunately, we didn't have an opportunity to cure this, we were hoping to do that this afternoon in committee, but the committee was canceled because the CLA report was not ready for the transmittal. So ever since I've been a council member here, we have been working with the mayor's office, with the revenue generated from the Produce Mart rent, and 57% traditionally goes to CDD and 43% goes to the mayor's office. We have been using the 57% to fund and make sure that the Bulky Adam Drop Off Center is operational and moving forward. The transmittal proposes allocating those funds to another project or number of projects. That would create basically a hole for Councilmember Antonio Viergoza to start day one with when it comes to the Bulky Adam Drop Off Center. This motion is to cure that gap and that hole and make sure that the program is funded fully so that he can start day one with the program that is moving forward. So that's why I introduced special three. The most important thing about it is that under the motion, the Homeboy Industries workers would continue having the contract with the department, and the voucher program, which is an integral part of how the Bulky Adam Drop Off Center works, will continue moving forward. Those two components are critical at this point, and that's why I introduced the special three. I didn't want Mr. Viergoza to start day one with a gap and a hole in that program.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Pacheco, for pointing that out, and I just offered 3A. I know there's a lot of negotiations that happen behind the scenes to make sure that we can keep this open for the next month. The UDAG money had originally been scheduled, though we don't have the meeting this afternoon, to go to some projects in CD8, some projects in CD2, and Councilmember Reyes is not here, sorry, CD1, and also in CD2, something else. So my only worry is that it would be taking it away from that. This keeps it open for another month, and all of us have praised this drop off center to the high moon, and it is our last intention for Mr. Pacheco or Mr. Viergoza to face a situation in which that does not continue. I have good faith in all the partners behind the scenes, Department of Sanitation, all the council offices and the mayor's office, that we will make sure that this drop off center, which is so critical and was so pioneering, does not get shut down. But what the amending motion does is it'll allow this to be kept open for one month while we find resolution on that, but it wouldn't take the money away from those projects in CD8 and CD1 and CD2 that had been a part of that UDAG reprogramming. So I urge your support, and I assure my good friend, Nick Pacheco, that what he was able to put out there will continue for posterity in the city.
Ms. Grohl.
Just to support the motion that Mr. Garcetti made, I know we have Eric Brown from the mayor's office, who is assuring us we will identify the funds to be able to keep this continued, because it has been a model for the city. We just want to make sure that the funds are coming from the right pot and that we're able to be, to fully fund it. So I would just stand in support of Mr. Garcetti's motion.
Okay, and appreciate that being on the record. Mr. Pacheco for a second time.
I have no problems with the motion if it contains the two, there's three things that must be assured. One is that the Homeboy Industries contract is continued for those 30 days, and two, that during those 30 days, the vouchers are paid as they're being processed, because ultimately, those are the two major components of the program. And then finally, I just want to put on the record very clearly that under no circumstances, me voting for the amendment is waiving Mr. Viergoza's entitlement to the $311,000 that's in balance here. I don't want people to think that I'm not trying to protect those resources that he's entitled to when he starts as a council member. So my vote is to make sure that we can move forward and buy some time so you can work it out with Mr. Viergoza, but under no circumstances should it be deemed that I'm waiving his entitlement to the balance, which is roughly about $311,000.
Mr. Garcetti for a second time.
I'll accept that amendment, which I then assume makes my amendment a friendly amendment to three, and I would move it.
So as Mr. Pacheco's friendly amendment to Mr. Garcetti's amending motion, accepted without objection, we have Mr. Pacheco's special motion as amended as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Members of the council still with us, we're down to 11 members. Appreciate your patience, we're almost done. Next item.
And there is a special four on the desk, presented by Council President Padilla, seconded by Councilmember Han, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. President, members, in order to consider this motion, it's also necessary that there be a determination made by the council, that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and that the need to take action on this matter came to the council's agenda, attention, subsequent to the posting of today's city council agenda.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, please open the roll on the findings, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Members wishing to be heard on the motion itself? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. All items approved today shall go forthwith. Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
And we do have four speaker cards, Warren Williams, C.L. Parrish, Soros, Rod, Srebor, and Carol Hossan. If you are here, please come forward. This is the public comment period, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction, but not appearing on today's agenda. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm a little set back here, I apologize, but are we speaking on item four, or what item did you just call?
This is general public comment.
General public?
Not for items from today's agenda.
Yes, are we still speaking on item four or any other?
No, item four has been acted upon. We're moving forward. We're moving forward.
I'm for the comment.
Sir, if I may ask you--
I'm letting someone else.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Please introduce yourself.
Yes, good afternoon, good morning, shalom, buenos dias. Now can I say a couple of words about Tom Bradley? Okay. My personal feeling is that I hope you guys do this quickly, not draw it out for months that, you know, months and months on end. I hope you guys come up with a quick decision. And I think, for reasons you guys probably know better than me, it would be great to name a street after Tom Bradley, because he opened up the city to all of us. So I hope that you guys make that decision quickly. I wish Jan Perry was here, because I wanted to ask her why, when the decision came up to change the name from South, Central Los Angeles to South Los Angeles, that she wasn't so concerned about the process and getting public opinion on that. That just seemed to go straight through. So I wish that today would have been the day that you did hear from the public, hear our views. And my personal view is, I think that the Bradley name would be a good change for the community. I found out some things about Mr. Crenshaw that wasn't too pleasing. For one thing, he had restricted covenants, didn't want any blacks or Asians or anybody non-white living over there. So to continue with that name in that neighborhood, I don't think is in the best interest.
Thank you.
And pick somebody like Tom Bradley, who had just the opposite attitude of opening up this city to everybody and creating economic and, you know, business expansion jobs for all of us, I think his name would be much, be a name we can all be proud of.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the city council, first and foremost, I'd like to congratulate Nate Holden for a wonderful tenure. Even though we can agree to disagree, I'm much appreciative of the service that you've rendered to us over the past 16 years. I would also like to thank Ruth Galanter for her legacy that she's left us as well, particularly at Venice Beach. Known as, my name was gotten primarily Big Money Griff through Venice Beach when I used to play basketball. So I have a legacy in Venice Beach. So I'm much appreciative of how she kept Venice Beach up and what she's done in regards to the recycling. So I'm grateful for that. However, I'm here, I'm a founder and coordinator of a group called Incrue, which is the National Coalition for Reparations and Economic Wealth, and I'm also in agreement with this ordinance that was just passed. I think this is, it's a good ordinance. I only would like to find out whether or not it has any teeth to it in regards to making it binding if the businesses and professions do not comply. And last but not least, I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Han in regards to her proposal regarding Tom Bradley. Only thing I would like to add, Ms. Han, is that we consider City Hall. As you all know, the upper portion of City Hall is Tom Bradley, so why not have the head as well as the body? And would like, we would also like to have you consider possibly putting a picture of Tom Bradley in the back there, a nice, large picture, and show his legacy.
Thank you, sir.
As just a suggestion. So there's many options that we can use in this regard.
Thank you very much.
But we want to hold on to Crenshaw Boulevard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The other speakers I've introduced, if I can ask you to please form a line behind the podium, please come forward at this time. Your name, sir?
My name is Soros Srebor, and my daughter Anna Srebor. And I'm a farmer in Manchester Square. And recently come over here because I got promised from the airport to buy a new home for my house after they bought my old house in Manchester. And now the airport give me a whole, they get set up everything, give me money to buy the house, and I looking for the house, and they accept that. And after that, we go to the escrow. After we go to escrow, and I told my landlord, you know, I gotta be, get through the house because the airports buy that house for me, and I so happy, my daughter is happy. And lately, about halfway go through, the airport sent me the paper, you know, they stopped everything. They take money back, they say, no, they cannot give me money to buy the house. And after that, I just know where to go, no hope, no nothing, and my daughter and me just like, nothing to go and no way to go. I just come over here for house, get my house, and just like, keep my life going on with my daughter.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And everything just get the halfway. Thank you very much.
The representative of the district will be glad to assist you, as well as with her staff.
Relocation issue, I'm happy to have my staff talk to you and work on this issue, understanding what the problem is and help get a resolution.
Okay. Next speaker, please.
Mr. President, council, my name is Ms. Parrish. I'm a voluntary advocate for the Manchester Square residents. It's, I'm here to put light on the situation with Mr. Srebor. He is an example of the abuses of Manchester Square residents. I spoke to David Kissinger. He's aware of the problem. The situation is this. The airport has bought his home. They were required by law to give him relocation benefits. That's his entitlement payment. They issued him a payment after a year and two months of waiting and fighting. He had to rent a home for him and his daughter. After formerly being a homeowner himself, he became a renter while he waited a year and two months for this entitlement payment, which came. It came under the direction of Joyce Sloss, the new program director. Mr. Srebor took that letter of entitlement and went immediately into escrow, where he's in escrow to buy a replacement home for him and his daughter, as the law requires. Yesterday, Mr. Srebor received a letter mandated by Ms. Sloss's boss, Samson Mengestu, saying, "We need to recall all that money, drop you out of escrow, and therefore leaving this gentleman and his daughter soon to be homeless. He has given his 30-day notice to vacate his rental." This abuse is just reprehensible. It's unbelievable, and it should be stopped, and we are here to seek assistance, because this came from top down.
Thank you. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention, as Ms. Mosikowski has mentioned.
I wanted to just bring to your attention, one more thing, is that he left items of documentation for the council, each person to read. One of the security guards had that, so if there is documentation, it's five pages in length that each person should have.
They will be circulating that. Thank you very much. And our final speaker.
Hi, Warren Williams with the Coalition for Black's Best Interest, and I just asked for a little more time, but I'll go as quickly as I can here. The first item is on Item Number Four again. We're thankful that that was approved at the last meeting. We did submit something in writing, though, in regards to it, and under the model of Chicago, the way it is, that it has no teeth. Notice something is there in the books now, but what is going to do? The first part of Mr. Holden's motion, we commend Mr. Councilman Holden on his motion on this item, was that this city needs to take action to give redress for those descendants of people who were enslaved. What would this do in really making that redress something that is real and practical, that is long deserved by the citizens of Los Angeles? I just want to make a recommendation to this council that one of your monitors can be placed outside here somewhere, because I think it would assist much in some of the disruptions and things that happen.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. President, I know that's an idea of yours, to have some ambassador by the door to help. Good idea, but I know you're thinking about it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
On Item Number 22--
Sir, I'm going to ask you to speak to items that were not on the agenda today. We finished acting on the items appearing on the agenda.
Yes, sir. Then on the public comment item, I may speak on briefly on Item Number 45, was discussed earlier.
No, sir. We've already acted on those items.
Okay. On tomorrow, we have a DAS march that's taking place at 54th and Normandy, going to Slosson and Normandy. The DAS march is just a march for fathers coming forward, saying that, you know, we're proud to be fathers, we're urging everyone to come out in support of it. It speaks directly to also issues that some parents, as well, who are also fathers, often are not even supported by LAPD and others when there's violations of court orders, contempt of orders, and they're not seeing their children even on the court orders. And therefore, they're denied a lot of times. I know a lot of times what I hear is that this council can do nothing on these issues. However, this council can make recommendations to the police commission. This council can be a voice to bring that type of balance into these issues.
What time is the function tomorrow, sir?
The function begins tomorrow at 11 o'clock. Again, begins at 54th and Normandy. It's going to Slosson and Normandy, where Queenie Summers has the Normandy Street Festival, beginning at 12, going to 7:00 PM, and it's open to all.
Thank you very much. We have one final speaker.
You--
Behind you. Next speaker, please. Sir, we need to keep moving. Thank you.
Carol Hassan, Westchester, Los Angeles. I just came from the reception for Councilwoman Ruth Galanter. I presented her with a flapping bird I made using the paper folding technique of origami to thank her for her leadership on the regional approach regarding airport traffic, and particularly for her pushing the utilization of Palmdale Regional Airport, an airport the City of Los Angeles has owned for decades and which currently has no flights coming out of it. I originally folded the flapping bird using a diagram of Mayor Han's alternative D to the LAX master plan, but I couldn't get it to fly. Now, I'm not going to speculate on the meaning of that. We're all going to be hearing a lot about alternative D soon. I've heard it's got 8,000 pages, plus there are still alternatives A through C on the table, meaning thousands of pages for the community and indeed, I suppose, everyone in the city to go through. I really don't think 45 days, which is what I have heard the mayor wants to give us, is enough. And I urge you to use what influence you have with him to give our community a chance. Our community, the president of the Westchester Playa del Rey Neighborhood Council, sent the mayor's office a letter requesting that, and I really think it's only fair that we get that. And I have, on a separate thing, a suggestion, perhaps at the Board of Airport Commissioners, every other month, they could provide us with an update on the progress that is being made on the regional approach, not just making LAX bigger. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council has put motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Members, are there any announcements today? Ms. Han for an announcement.
I know everybody already knows, but I wanted to make this official announcement that, as of yesterday morning, I became a grandmother for the first time of the most, bar none, the most beautiful baby girl ever born to humankind. McKenna was born yesterday morning to my daughter Katie and her husband John, and we are all extremely excited and proud. But she is really the most beautiful baby girl ever born.
Congratulations to the city's most recent and youngest grandmother.
I know, really.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I want to announce that my seatmate, Janice Han, is now a grandmother. And the granddaughter's most beautiful baby is ever born.
To humankind.
Except her daughter, who's Katie. And the reason why Katie was the most beautiful baby ever born is because the President of the United States of America, holding Katie in his arms in Kenny Han--
You can say Kenny Han.
Kenny Han's office. And he looked at Supervisor Han, and we were there, and he says, "Kenny, the most beautiful baby ever born in the world." So the most beautiful baby, of course, would have nothing more than the most beautiful baby. And there you are. I also want to say that tomorrow, my successor, Mr. Martin Ludlow, is being sworn in, so I'm told, at the stadium, Jack Robinson Stadium, where Dorsey plays football, is that it? Rancho, at Rancho. I think it's like 9:30 in the morning, at 9:30 AM. So all of those of you who live in the 10th District, and it's a big, open field, should probably go out and give Mr. Ludlow some support. It's a tough job, it's not easy. People decided that he should be the next councilperson, and you should give him help all you can. Be patient, it'll take some time for him to learn the job. But also know that I will be there when called upon to assist him in any way that I can. I also want you to know that, since I've been serving with the president of the council, once as a voting member, and then another time as a leader, where he is now the president, that there have been some rocky days, as he said, as he was referring to Mr. Bernstein's early association with him as president. But that's always the case in the political arena. But I want you to know that in recent times, the president has risen above anything that you could perceive to be contentious. And what I view at this point in time, whereas he has no opposition, as we can know of at this time, he's been working well with all the other 14 members who are present and voting. I would hope that the new members, when they come aboard, would take the time to get to know the president as we have. Although you're going to have opposition, although you're going to take position that are different, that they may, good chance they'll get to know him well enough to take the same position. We have other people here who work with us who are equally qualified, and that's why they were elected, to serve in that, and also leadership positions. But the, but those who lead have chosen a leader, at least during the time that I've been here, even though you know where I was initially, but I'm with them today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other announcements? Mr. Labange?
Just two announcements. First, Councilmember Grul and I, and I know Councilmember Weiss and Zine and Ms. Mosikowski, all joined tomorrow with staff or others to support the Mulholland cleanup as the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy clean Mulholland Drive, meeting in the morning, 8:30, at the base of Fryman Canyon Overlook, at the Fryman Canyon Overlook, just west of Laurel Canyon. We invite everybody out to join in cleaning up a wonderful site. And also--
What time would that be, Mr.--
8:30 in the morning. So we could do that before we go down to Martin Ludlow swearing in, and thank you for that reminder. But, Mr. Holden, when you gave that great, elegant speech, and you have given many great, elegant speeches, I thought it was appropriate, and maybe you have a shot, because I know you haven't had a chance to speak, members over there, that I wanted to make the last presentation to Nate Holden. So Janice, would you please join me, since you're a seatmate, and present to Nate 42 public speaker cards that you could have, and you could prepare to fill out with your name as you come back, and you can know that you can always speak. Janice Holden, as your dad taught us all. Okay.
Mr. Labange, what did we ever do to you?
No! We're getting from Nate. But I want to say, I want to just say this again--
Tom, 42, that is far too many. Can you do something about that?
Yeah, I know, there's 42 weeks in a year. I don't know what it is, 52 weeks. I want to also say, Nate, I want to thank Nick Pacheco. I want to thank you again for your service to this city, Nick, and what you've done and what you did at the Pueblo, which is so important in reviving the heart of this city. But also, I want to salute my seatmate, Nate Holden, who truly has a one-of-a-kind individual who, as I said at your dinner the other night, has an absolutely great heart. So I want to thank you again, and thank you for the extra time, Mr. President, and there's 42 for you to take with you. See ya.
Other announcements? Mr. Pacheco.
First of all, speaking of El Pueblo, I think this is my final day of work. On Monday, June 30th, at 6:30 PM, we are going to be placing the plaques, unveiling of the plaque for all the descendants of Los Pobladores. We have 11 plaques that we're going to be presenting, placing around El Qiosco to finally top off all the work we've been doing there to bring back El Pueblo. So I invite everyone, it's a great event, it's our birthplace of the city, so that is, that should be, if everything goes as planned, my final act as a councilmember. I also wanted to tell you all, because I've been asked repeatedly, what am I doing next? So that's my announcement. My announcement is that I am going to be joining a boutique law firm that Sean Faver has. It's at 888 South Figueroa Street. It's the 15th floor. Phone number for anyone is 213-489-1513. It's an AV-rated law firm. We are going to be specialized in employment law, medical malpractice defense-- We are going to be specialized in employment law, medical malpractice defense, bankruptcy law, business law, dispute mediation, advising and defending municipalities, and specifically Dennis and Chief Police Officer Defense when it comes to some of the municipalities. And it will be, at some point soon, a formal announcement when it becomes Favor and Pacheco, and you'll get that invitation. So...
Congratulations. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to repeat an announcement, because we're only going to have one day of work next week. But Nate Holden, 10th District, Jan Perry, 9th, and Janice Hahn, 15th, and Bernard Parks in the 8th District, along with Yvonne Burke, are putting on our fireworks extravaganza on July 4th at the Coliseum. It's the best price in town, it's free. And for those who attend the Lemur Park Vision Theater Jazz Festival, we'll also have shuttle buses taking you from Lemur Park to the Coliseum. And that's on the 4th. The Jazz Festival starts at 1:00 p.m. The shuttle bus will pick people up from 7:30 to 10, excuse me, 10:30, and the fireworks will start at dusk.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. More on 4th of July events to come next Tuesday, but one correction: We have four days of work next week. 4th of July is a holiday. We have one day of council.
Yeah, one day of council, I'm sorry. I thought it was on the 3/12, I'm sorry.
Well, by today's clock, you probably will be on 3/12.
Other announcements?
And Councilmember Labange, there's 52 weeks in the year. Okay.
Ms. Zion.
I just wanted to, just want to make sure you counted right. I just had an announcement that tomorrow, the Warner Center Coahuas will have a flag-hanging ceremony along Ventura Boulevard between Topanga and DiSoto. They'll be doing that for the upcoming Independence Day. Also, tomorrow, between 10 and 2, meet your local elected official at Ventura and Canoga at the Whole Foods Market with all the concerns of the community, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zion. I, too, have a couple of announcements first. Tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. in Lakeview Terrace at Hanson Dam, we're going to be celebrating the grand opening of the Lakeview Terrace Library, the most sustainable, designed and built library, and city facility for that matter, throughout the city of Los Angeles. Tomorrow morning, 10:00 a.m., a new library in addition to the city's library system on the corner of Foothill and Osborne, for residents throughout the valley and throughout the city. We hope to see you there. Also, the balance of the agenda, or the schedule, for the incoming members and their community inaugurations, we've heard about Martin Ludlow's activities tomorrow evening. I believe it's 6:00 p.m. mass, 7:00 p.m. swearing in for Councilmember-elect Antonio Villarrealosa at Union Station. Take the red line if you can, promote public transportation. On Sunday, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the North Valley YMCA, will be the swearing in for Councilmember-elect Greg Smith. And on Monday, Mr. Labange, give us the details, and bring your hiking shoes.
And on all your other work, hike, you can come right into the historic Marigold Round area, right by the historic Marigold Round in Park Central and Griffith Park at 5:00 p.m. In addition to after the ceremony, we'll have free rides on the Marigold Round, and we've catered it with the greatest hot dogs that are served in the city from the 5th District, from Pink's Hot Dogs, right next to my district. So there's Pink's Hot Dogs for anyone who comes, and just use my name. Thank you.
Put it on Tom's tab. Other announcements?
You have the date for Tony's?
Mr. Parks, no. Councilmember-elect Cardenas is not scheduled to swearing in yet. I'm sure invitations will get around when that is done. Other announcements? Adjourning motions? I want to recognize Councilmember Zion out of order to speak first.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And if I can ask everybody in the audience to please stand.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, the request for adjourned memory of a friend of a colleague in law enforcement, Detective Abel Abe Barone. Detective Barone passed away June 25th. Abe was a Los Angeles Police homicide detective. While on duty, died in a fatal traffic collision after being hit head-on by a truck on the 138 freeway. Abe and his partner returning from an assignment. His partner, Detective Andrew Teague, is in critical condition in the hospital. They were followed up on a gang investigation. They both were on the infamous list of 44, both very dedicated members of the Los Angeles Police Department. Abe was a 49-year-old homicide detective, assigned to the Northeast Division. He'd been with the department for nearly 20 years, and he worked the toughest divisions of the city, working homicide and working gag enforcement detail. His funeral arrangements are pending at this time, they should be announced on Monday. Our prayers are with his family, his colleagues. He leaves his wife Anne Marie and a daughter, Lauren, 13 years of age. May Abe, Detective Abe Barone, rest in peace.
All members. Other tributes? Mr. Labange?
For the poor detective and Detective Teague, who was in there, we don't know when our time comes, and these officers were working on an issue that is very important to Mr. Garcetti and my area in the north part of Los Angeles County. And this highway, which is just a two-lane highway, they were proceeding eastbound, and I think the fate of someone anxious to try to pass a Walmart semi, came right into it, and Detective Barone turned his wheel in the opposite, took the full blunt of this tragedy, and you saw the picture in The Times this morning, and in an instant, he was called to his maker. And it's so terrible, but we don't know. But these particular detectives worked extremely hard in the northeast part of Los Angeles and the districts that cover the Los Angeles River area, and they were very hard-charging, dedicated officers. I joined with you, Mr. Zion, in your remarks, the poor family. He grew up in Los Angeles, Detective Barone, and went also to school with Becky, our own Becky, at Creative Services at Garfield, and was shocked, as everyone was, when we learned of this tragedy. And I just think it's something we all should take a moment. I had an opportunity to visit the station yesterday, and it is, you would know as professionals in the policing business prior to being councilmembers, how tough it is, just like when we have something here. So I just, all of us, and as you mentioned, Mr. President, adjourned in here, and I know the flags are at half-staff, and whenever the funeral is, I think it should be appropriate that as many of us could go to salute this detective, because when you hear why they were doing what they were doing, you'll know how special these officers were and how tragic it was. Thank you.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm saddened to adjourn in memory of Arnie Gene Robinson, a close family friend of Miranda Pastor, who's in our city clerk's office, passed away on June 17th, 2003. Arnie was born on January 14th, 1939, and grew up in Mississippi and Michigan. In 1955, she married Curtis Robinson, Sr., and they settled in LA and raised four children. Curtis preceded her in death in 1995. She is survived by her children, Curtis Robinson, Jr., Tony Robinson, Geraldine Robinson, Tracy Ann Robinson Irving, and eight grandchildren. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I have two requests for us to adjourn our meeting in memory of. Councilwoman Perry asked me to do this one for her, since she wouldn't be here, and she would like us to adjourn in the memory of Homer James, who was a resident of her 9th District and a community activist. Mr. James moved to Los Angeles from Oklahoma after World War II, and his first home was on 41st and San Pedro, and he later moved to 1326 West 61st Street, where he passed away late last night at the age of 92. Mr. James was the president of the 61st Street Block Club for over 20 years, and was a member of many community organizations, certainly the 9th District, but I think all of Los Angeles will miss his involvement in our city. And I'd also like to request that we adjourn today in the memory of James Starr, Jr., who passed away on June 19th. Pastor James Starr, Jr. was born on January 13th, 1929, in Arkansas, and again, passed away on June 19th. He was a longtime resident of the 15th Council District, and he was the pastor who founded the Olive Grove Church of God in Christ, located on 112th and Broadway 43 years ago. In celebration of his life, the church will host a community memorial service in his memory tonight at 7:00 p.m., and that's open to the public. The funeral services will be held at the church, the Olive Grove Church of God in Christ, on Saturday, this June 28th, at 11:00 a.m. He is survived by his wife, three daughters, one son, and numerous grandchildren and great-grandchildren, and the many members of the church family. He was also the uncle of Simone Starr, who was a longtime field deputy for Rudy Subornich. Thank you.
Other tributes? Ms. Mosikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, Mr. Harry Edo was able to give me the information that for Detective Barone, the funeral services are now going to be on Thursday at 10:00 a.m. in Whittier Rose Hills. So for those who have that advance notice to clear our calendars, so as Mr. Labange requested, as many councilmembers, I think, attending, that would be appropriate. And I'd also like to adjourn today in memory of two women, and this has been a really significant loss for someone I think we all know very well, Rob Glushan. His mother, Carol, passed away Tuesday after having suffered from cancer, and his mother-in-law, Lila Newman, passed away Monday. So this week, his family, he and Suzie and their three kids, lost both mothers. They both lived in Encino. I've known Rob and Suzie for a long time, and both mothers, both families, were very active in the Encino community, up until the time a year ago when the district changed. Carol Glushan, Rob's mother, was active on a citizens committee, working on whether or not an Haskell Avenue off-ramp should be closed off the 101, which has had some problems, but were it to be closed, would create other problems in the neighborhood. And Lila Newman and Carol also were very active in the Encino traffic hillside community plan, which really has been the largest effort by the city's Department of Transportation Neighborhood Management Planning Group, to really work with the community, to collaborate and come up with ideas. And Lila is survived by her husband Bernie, and both of them are survived by their children and many grandchildren. And I know, in particular, our hearts go out to Rob and Suzie, having to have, as I say, both of them had been suffering from cancer, and yet were both active up until the end, both in their children's lives and in their community's lives, and they will be very, very much missed.
All members. Other tributes? Seeing none, then, before we adjourn the meeting, just one final thank you and farewell to our outgoing, retiring colleagues, Mr. Holden, Mr. Pacheco, and they're not here at the moment, but Mr. Burton and Ms. Galanter as well. We appreciate all you've done for the city of Los Angeles, and we know you're just a phone call away. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Can I do a point of order and ask Mr. Holden to borrow the microphone right now from you for one last time, real quick? Get up there, Nate. You know what to say, Nate.
Mr. Holden?
This meeting is adjourned.
I was expecting to hear, "Hold my time." This meeting.